You ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Eustace City Hall. This is a regular city commission meeting of the Eustace City Commission. It's 6:00 PM, Thursday, November the 18th, 2021. At this time, we're going to ask if you would like to join us in the invocation and the pledge. If you'd like to join us, please stand. The pledge will be given by Commissioner Karen LaHooch Smith. As we have our invocation tonight, I'd like to... Many of you know that we lost Sheriff Borders, our former sheriff here in Lake County this week. If you'll just remember him in your prayers. Thank you. Amen. Karen?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and call our meeting to order. Mayor, has there a current present paper notice been given?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Tom, any agenda update, sir?
Yes, Mayor. Not all of the representatives of East Central Florida Regional Planning Council are here yet. So if it's acceptable, I would suggest that we do that presentation as part of Item 6.4, Resolution 2197, which is in regards to that memorandum of understanding for that Brownfields grant.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Tom?
No, that's it.
All right. Commissioners, before us, we have the approval of minutes from our October 4th, 2021, City Commission workshop and our October 21st, 2021, regular city commission meeting. What's the will of our commission?
I move for approval, Mayor.
A second.
Thank you all. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHooch Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Next, we're going to come down to audience to be heard. This evening, if you're going to speak on something that is under other business, you will need to do that during this part because we will not allow public comment during other business tonight. And that's just something that we have done as a commission over the years, and we're going to try to keep it that way. So if you're going to speak on something under other business, you'll need to do it under audience to be heard. Tom, do you have some cards filled out, sir?
Yes. George Barton?
Thank you. Mr. Barton? And as you come up, if you would, please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a longtime resident of Eustace. I recently threw help with the chief police and other police officers helped set up a neighborhood watch. And it's had a big impact. The biggest problems we have there are, number one, speakers. And it would be driven out if we could hear a stop sign. Right where Trout Lake and North Shore Drive come together. It'd slow people down. Eventually, somebody will be hit by a car. Eventually, dogs, cats, squirrels, turtles will be run over. Something can be done. Well, the city commission, a couple of years, they've done it with backwards. To help pick where all those vacant properties are now, we asked that you please consider us, the people that live there. And the people that walk up and down the street and the pets and the creatures. So, there's a big problem. Much vacant property. Can you please hold the people that own those properties, hold their pictures up there? Get vendors something. Get them maybe to clean up, straighten up. Those properties are just going down, down, downhill. That would be nice if you could ask the property owners to do something that we people. And the third thing, lighting. Some people would like to talk about lighting. I put my comments for thank the city of Eustace police. They really made a big difference. Because there's a pothole on the bridge at Trout Lake where there's a covert big dump. It slowed down the traffic a lot, traffic a lot because there's signs that say, "No through traffic." Leave them alone. It slowed things down. We, the people in the neighborhood, have put up slow down signs. But a stop sign can't do that either. It could be done. Getting the people at home to vacant properties. Now, it's Eustace. Y'all did a lot to help them get what they want. What have they done for us? Lot of problems. Because up until recently, doors were open. People who need shelter, that's where they stay. If we could please ask the people that own those properties to require them. Put it on them.
Thank you, sir.
James Vigil?
I'm James Vigil. Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm following up with George. We started the North Shore Neighborhood Watch, as you probably know, back in August, with meeting with Chief Capri, Captain Carney. They've been great. Those guys have been great and helping us. And I know some of y'all were out there for the lake cleanup we did, and that was also nice. So you've been up and down the street, and we've been voicing our concerns with the chief. And he... We all think it was a good idea, just to let you all know, too. Maybe we can further discuss, research, and the... As George pointed out, speeding. I mean, it's not everybody, but there just seems to be a percentage of drivers that come through there in the morning, come through there in the afternoon, that do speed. And as you know, you've been down there. It's a nice area, pedestrians, bikes, lots of kids out there. So anyway, we wanted to see if we could get something done to slow things down. That's all, whatever it could be. And George pointed out the homeless. I know the homeless is a big issue, but maybe just trying to not make it so attractive. There are the vacant buildings. Unfortunately, I know they're privately held, owned by developers. Problem is, they're just sitting there. And I think the chiefs reached out to them a lot of times, get it cleaned up, and that does help. You know, it makes it more visible. They can't... People can't hide out there. But just some things we wanted to bring up to you all. But appreciate everything you've done, and the police department, too, has been great with us, too. So hopefully, we'll keep going with our neighborhood watch and maybe be the first of many. Thank you.
Patricia Sword?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Sword, and I live at 13-800 Jefferson Street, Grand Island. Many of us came here a couple of weeks ago, voicing our displeasure with the planned development on the corner of Fish Camp Road and 44. I was totally frustrated when I left that meeting because it was clear that the council, except for maybe one or two, had already made up their mind and made their decision to approve the project, and the meeting was just a formality. I can understand that Eustace is continually wanting to increase their revenue, which this project will do. But who else, other than Eustace, the developer, the store chains, will benefit from this project? Not those of us who live near the planned project, not the bakery, not the print shop. In addition, the development will increase the congestion at this already dangerous intersection. Is Eustace needing revenue so badly that they are handing out waivers and pushing this project through? This project will not negatively affect anyone on this council. It will, however, have a negative effect on our community. We do not want the crime, the traffic congestion, the lights, the noise, the contamination danger, just to name a few, that comes with this type of development. I couldn't help but laugh to myself at the last meeting when the gentleman, I don't know his name, the representative of this development, said that they were only going to put in two toilets. First of all, we all know that's a development flaw in itself because two toilets at a gas station is not nearly enough toilets. He failed to state, however, how many other toilets would be installed in the other buildings that they are planning to build on the rest of the property. We all know that if this project goes through, it is only the beginning of the construction, and with that, the destruction of our community as we know it. I ask that you please reconsider your decision and be a good neighbor to our community, Grand Island. Thank you.
Charlene Cotterman?
Good evening. Thank you for letting us talk again. What I want to address tonight is... Hey, you changed the microphone. I about leaned into it and hit my mouth. Two weeks ago, when we were here and you heard everybody talk, and Mr. Green, the developer, whatever he is...
He's the engineer.
Engineer, thank you. Stood here and told you they were going to give the tenants 15 days to vacate, and you said, "Please give them more. That's not really enough." He called up the gentleman, the attorney for the Osbury College, and then they called up the buyer, and I didn't catch his name. I didn't understand him. Can you tell me his name? Chris, the guy that was between Mr. Green and Butch, two weeks ago? The buyer, the proposed buyer?
I remember what they look like, but I don't know their names.
Nobody knows his name?
I don't remember it, no, ma'am.
Okay. Well, anyway, you know, they're all like, "Well, that's up to you. That's up to you." And they agreed with one of you recommending to let them stay until January 31. On Monday, the following week, three days later, whatever it was, the tent... You already know, probably, this. They come to work and find notices on their door, "You need to be out November 30." According to the bakery owner, she told me yesterday that the attorney is going to come next Tuesday and require them to sign a document stating they'll be out by December 31. But I'm just asking all of you to stand by your word of two weeks ago and to ask that buyer and that developer to stand by their word that they made to you to get their waivers passed. Where does this end? You know? Somebody's got to stand up for principle here. And I don't know if any of you are on Nextdoor Neighborhood, but Grand Island has Nextdoor Neighborhood as well. Many do. And someone had posted, and I just lost it because I exited off of there, something about vetting for the gas tanks. And I think one resolution that would make at least 95% of the people happy... You can't make everybody happy all the time. You can't do it. Is if we could all come to the table somehow, some of us, whoever, and ask the developer if they would flip that site plan. That would put that 7-Eleven at the other end of the property. If you've all looked at the piece of... Whole piece of the property. He would be right there for the sewer and water hookups, wouldn't need to have a septic, and he could build a strip mall all the way to the other end and possibly let the bakery and the t-shirt printing shop, Specialty T's, remain intact. And then he wouldn't end up in the front yard of the people on Jefferson Street because that property goes further back, at the other end of the property. It's just a thought. Don't know that they'd be willing to do that. And there again, we've got a 7-Eleven two and a half miles away. So it really makes no sense. It just makes no sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Courtney?
Thank you, council, for letting me come up here and just have a moment of your time. I grew up in beautiful Grand Island and went to school at Taveri's. So I know how lovely our county is and how different it is from the hustle and bustle of Orlando. And I think along... Myself and along with the residents, I think the sentiment is that we would like to keep it less like Orlando. That's what makes us different. I just bought my first house in the neighborhood right across the street from the existing gas station on the other side of Fish Camp. And I walk everywhere I go. So I do walk over to the bakery, and I am concerned about the traffic that this will bring because it is hectic walking across there. And I just caught wind of everything that is happening about a week and a half ago. So I felt like, you know, as I understand it, you guys have made some decisions. But I just want to, I guess, say that the people that own the bakery are lovely people. I don't think that they're going to be given enough time to get out and still, you know, through the holiday season, they're going to have that stress on them. But I'm here actually because I'm concerned about the family that owns the gas station. It's not open all night. It's not glitz and glam. But these people are wonderful people, and they just had a baby about a month ago. And I'm concerned that this big corporate gas station is going to put them out of business. And I just want to be their voice today. We already have a 7-Eleven 3.7 miles down the road. I'm not sure that another 7-Eleven is going to benefit our community. Thank you.
It just says Dino.
That's close enough. You couldn't say Gilda Land last time, so I figured I'd just make it easy. Thank you all for letting me speak to you. Last time we were here, they had these pictures of Grand Island and where the 7-Elevens are going to go. The pictures did not show what it really looks like. I have a picture of it, satellite picture of it. Our mobile homes... I lived there. Our mobile homes are right on the edge of that road. And they're talking trees, a little fence or something. It's going to be a buffer. Ain't going to do nothing. They need to put... And I've seen a lot of them. They need to put up a cement wall or bricks or something because that's our backyard. You don't want it in yours, do you? If you're back there and you're having your grandkids over there for a birthday party or something, you want to listen to trucks and everything coming in? I don't either. I lived there, and we spent a lot of time. This 7-Eleven, with all their noise and everything, is going to affect over seven different trailers. That's Joe and what's called it? They're right on the edge. I mean, they're like... They're there. That's their backyard. That's our backyard. And I know you don't want it in yours, and we don't either. I don't think we can stop this thing because I don't want it there at all. But at least, let me have my quiet. You know, we sit back there and have little barbecues and, you know, you start a little fire pit. You know, we don't want to listen to trucks and all that noise because you don't want to do that with your grandkids while you're having a birthday party. And they said last night... They showed it. I got a picture of it. We got... Our trailer is sitting right on the edge of that road. But the pictures that they showed you guys two weeks ago, then it wasn't one trailer there. Not one. You don't know that it's there, but it's there. I got it. And if you want, come on over and look. You can almost reach out and touch the fence that they're thinking about putting in or the buffer or the trees. Ain't going to buffer nothing. It's going to be a buff. You know, that doesn't do nothing. You can almost talk through one of them plastic fences. Try it. I done it. But I don't... I think if they're going to do this, they're going to need to put up a wall because I've seen it on Circle K's and all of them. They put up them big cement walls and blocks all the noise. Because I like to sit back there and enjoy it. I'm old. I just want to sit back there and have a beer and have a fire pit and enjoy it. I don't want to listen to trucks and people's stereos and everything else. But you guys want to put up a little fence and a tree? Ain't going to do nothing. Absolutely nothing. It's a joke. Or a tree. Yeah, you might as well like said, "Do nothing."
Thank you.
Bonnie Brobst?
Good evening. Yep, I want to talk about the same thing, the 7-Eleven. It's going to be in... Actually, in my front yard. I live on Jefferson Street. I've lived in there for 40 years in that house. I don't want a 7-Eleven that's two-story. I don't want to look at those lights. I don't want to hear the crime. I don't want the cars going down my dead-end street because they don't know where they're at. I don't want all that. I want to keep my peace and quiet that I've had for 40 years. I'm concerned for the people that live there, our community. We're retirees. We spend our days at home. This will create a nuisance by injuring the quality of life, the health of our community, our safety, and of the children. Property values, emissions, crime risk of explosion, fires, gas spills, just to name a few proven harmful effects from living close to a gas station. It's going to increase the air pollution, benzene emissions that can lead to health concerns. I don't want to get cancer because I got a 7-Eleven in my front yard now. I didn't move out to the community... To that area to have a gas station there. I got one, and he closes at 10 o'clock, which is heaven, really, because then it basically is quiet. We don't need another gas station. Why can't they put it on 452? I mean, there's nothing on 452 from that same intersection of Fish Camp all the way to Buckin' Doze. There's how many miles? Five miles? 10, maybe? There's nothing out there. They would love to have one out there. The traffic will increase as well as accidents and noise. I don't have anything against 7-Eleven. I just don't want it in my front yard. And certainly not in the community where all these people take pride in living there as long as I have. A lot of those people have been there as long as I have. We... I saw my house built. It was... It will lower my property value of my house. I just don't want this to happen if I can stop, if I can do anything. Thank you.
Dee Gretzler?
Good evening. I've been attending these meetings for the better part of a year. And I came out originally because of the Thrill Hill issue and the annexation, and that inspired me. My house is inside city limits, but I like to enjoy the incorporated and unincorporated area of my community. And I feel like we're going out of balance. And it's why I feel it's really important for me to come to these meetings, and so I'm making it more of a commitment to come here. You guys come here every other week. And I was inspired by all the people who came out last week and talked, and Commissioner Lee commented and applauded them for their respect. And I did, too. I thought they were very respectful, and it's taught me a lot. And I learned some things, too. I didn't know about all the research of the things that would happen when you bring in a gas station and the idea of land use. And I don't know if that land use was designated 40 years ago. I don't know. And I don't know if there's any changes that can happen after the fact of making a decision. But a gentleman next to me made a comment after the vote, and he said, "Oh, I wish they'd... I wish they'd spent some time and talked about it and maybe gotten some things in writing and gone back to the developers and said, 'Hey, these are the concerns from the community,' and there's a lot of community coming out. And they're our neighbors. You know, we're inside city limits, but they're our neighbors. They're my neighbors, your neighbors. That's our community." And when people come up, when that much activity comes out, I'd love to see that the commission maybe steps back and says, "Wow, there's a lot of activity and concern around this. Maybe we should spend some time and not make a decision tonight." And the gentleman next to me said, "Maybe they could have delayed." And Thrill Hill's been delayed and delayed and delayed. And when it comes to variances, you know, maybe step back when there's that much uprise about an issue. And if you are going to grant variances, get something in writing from them. I'm really sad to hear that already some of the things that were suggested but never really agreed to by the developer are already being countered. You know, the idea of give them three months, and now it's, you know, 15 days. That might not be totally accurate. But the idea of... We didn't get any... We didn't extract an agreement from them. We've given them variances. You know, you're representing to us, and you didn't take anything back. You didn't say, "Okay, if you want a variance, let's get something in writing from you." You know, give and take. You're going to want this. We want something back. And I'm sorry that there wasn't more discussion around it to say, "Hey, we want a wall, not a plastic fence. We want something more." Or come up with that idea. That's a great idea of flipping it so that the gas station is further away from these people, from their homes. And the idea of light pollution, I didn't even think about it until I went away and thought about it. And I thought, "Wow, you know, the whole community is going to be impacted." And, you know, their mental health, their well-being. There's going to be a ripple effect going outward from this. So the reason I came tonight, I didn't even know we'd still be talking about Grand Island, but I came to ask that in going forward and making decisions that we learn from our neighbors, maybe take some time to reconsider if necessary. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for your no vote on that particular issue. But, you know, just spend more time and just remember that we are neighbors. And just because we're inside city limits doesn't mean that we don't have family outside city limits. So thank you for your time tonight. Oh, and thank you for all you do. I thought about all the papers that you guys have to read on top of your daily jobs and how much time you have to invest in taking care of our city. So I want to thank you as well for that.
Thank you, Dee.
Dawn Luciano?
Good evening. Thank you for the time, like everybody else has said. All my questions and everything that'll be talked about is to Resolution 21-85, which concerns all the problems going on with the 7-Eleven, shall we say. Question I asked last meeting was about the gopher tortoises. There are many there. I haven't gotten any word by... From anyone of any plan, other than they're going to go ahead with construction, and I'm assuming they're going to just run them over because there's no plan. They are endangered. And if need be, the EPA will be called and notified of such things. Again, going back to the law that Dino and the other young lady had brought up, Mr. Green said that they put something up there, didn't specify. And we obviously know we cannot trust Mr. Green, as he does not keep to his word. I would like in writing the height, the length, the material to be used for this and be approved by the board before it goes forth. Only thing that's in this resolution is the landscape buffers between parcels will be a minimum of 10 feet. All this information I got off of eustace.civicweb.net. That is up on there. Okay. Let's go to the septic because that's got a lot of things. As said, Mr. Green said there's two bathrooms. On Exhibit A, the site plan, it doesn't specify any bathrooms, where they are, how many, if they're next to each other. If there's one on the left, one on the right, it doesn't say. So one can assume that the employees will have to use a public bathroom. Also, the 7-Eleven will be making sandwiches and such. It's going to have sinks, that sewage as well. Since they have on the site plan a 7-by-17 drain... Drain field, I'm sure they had put an application in with the Department of Health for the septic tank. I would like to know what their total daily sewage is pertaining to the size of the septic system as well. I would like to know what the plan is for maintenance and also what the plan would be for septic failure, seeing as the site of the drain field is actually on the corner of 44 and Fish Camp Road. If there's a failure and they have to come and fix it, well, that's going to shut that intersection down and cause a lot of problems, especially getting mail. Other than that, I'd also like to know about the gas tanks. How many? What they plan on being held? I'd like to know, is there going to be propane on the premises? And a question I think you can ask, has a final plan been submitted to the board?
It's three minutes, ma'am.
Tom, have we gotten a final plan on that yet?
Well, we, we, what we approved was a site plan. They're going to have to come back for a building permit where all of those details will be worked out.
And when will that be done?
Uh, that, it depends on when the transaction happens, and then they're going to have to mobilize their consultants to get a, the building permit prepared. Lori, is that accurate?
Come on. There's another step involved.
What would that other step be? And you don't need to roll your eyes, ma'am.
Please, please don't attack the staff.
I'm not attacking. I'm just stating an observation.
Please do not.
The next step in the process is final engineering and construction plans, and that is where the engineer will submit a full set of engineering plans, including all the details. At that time, and at that time, that will be reviewed administratively by the Development Review Committee. That is an administrative function that follows the City Commission approval of a site plan. The building permit application may run concurrently with the final engineering and construction plans. And upon approval of both the final construction plans for the horizontal work and the building permit for the vertical work, the city will require that all other state agency permits are issued, or copies are submitted to the city, and a pre-construction meeting will be required before they break ground.
Thank you.
I just have one question. And when do they address the gopher tortoise, gopher tortoise situation?
We would need to double-check the environmental reports submitted on the project. If it is indeed gopher tortoise territory, and that's been identified, they need to do a official gopher tortoise survey on the property within thirty days of breaking ground. And they need to provide for either leaving those nests undisturbed or for relocating under a fish and wildlife permit.
Thank you. That's what I had been asking for. I just didn't know if it was addressed at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Janie Ulioni.
Good 7/11. Good evening. Of course, I'm here for the 7/11, like on November 4th. I just, I know that it's a done deal, and you voted four to one, but we're still very, very upset about this. And the reason is, and I'm not going to go through this again, because you all heard it, the crime, the noise, the whole nine yards. The police, City of Eustis Police Department, are there going to be more officers hired to take on more crime in the west side of town? Because we live right on the line between the county and the city now. That's one of my major concerns. A big concern, though, I just wanted you to relook at this. You're putting almost a five-thousand-square-foot building out in the country with eight gas pumps and a high-rise cover. And who knows what else? Maybe later on, I'm thinking a car wash. I don't know. I don't have anything to do with 7/11. But you're really making this peaceful community, maybe y'all, not or not, they're making this peaceful community going to be something that it's no longer. I mean, we'd rather be like a Mount Door or like downtown Eustis, rather than Orlando. It's, it's just, you know, all the neighbors are against it. When we were at the meeting on November 4th, I didn't hear one person in here say, "Yeah, 7/11, can't wait for that coffee and hot dogs." Nobody said that. Everybody's against it. Public records request, all the emails, I recall, except for maybe one, was all against the 7/11. So, I'm not sure if maybe the people, the residents in the area, needs to appeal this decision. I think it's going to be a neighborhood talk. But it's something that we just don't want. And I don't really think that you guys realize what the impact is going to cause out there on Forty-four. We're going to have more crashes, like someone spoke about. It's ridiculous out there now. The 7/11 is going to be an abuse for the community. I mean, I patronized 7/11 on nineteen. I go there, get coffee and whatever, but we do not need it in our, in our area. And I wish y'all would really rethink it. Plus, the fact from their plans, we really don't know, is a wall going up? Is a fence going up? They were, nobody really wanted to answer some of the questions, and they kind of hemmed and hawed about it. And it's not fair to the people that have lived there all their lives. I mean, if, we'll welcome a business, but not when we're in the, in the know. We don't have any idea. You know, and the poor people that live in the mobile home park and Jefferson Street, they're going to get the brunt of this. It's going to be awful. I live back a couple streets. I'm not probably going to hear it. But a lot of our streets are little cul-de-sacs in that area. And right now, I can tell you, at night, we do have some riffraff going through the area. This is going to bring more. I've called the sheriff's office, because I'm Lake County Sheriff's Office, asked them to do extra patrol. Nobody showed up. I stayed up all night long because of some activity in the neighborhood. We don't have any crime, but I wanted to deter it. So, really, I guess my question to you guys is, can we be prepared if the 7/11 does become established? Be prepared for the crime and have more patrols on the west side of town? Because we're going to need it. I'm just, I just have one question, and I'm, if you could enlighten me. I just don't understand. This is my first time being in one of these commission meetings, fighting for something that I just don't think is right. But I'm not understanding, if everybody came here and said they didn't want it, how did it get voted in four to one? Is there something that I missed? Should I be doing research somewhere? Like, we all heard the same thing, and it wasn't real clear. I don't understand why four of you guys voted yay and one voted no. Is that privileged information?
No, ma'am. What it is, though, it's property rights.
Okay.
The owners of that property have rights as well as you all did.
Right, I get it.
Okay? So, that's what it falls down to.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for explaining that, because I didn't know. So...
And, and we said that, that night. We're, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place when it comes to a lot of that.
Okay.
And when you look at other buildings that have been built, waivers have been given. And some of the waivers that we gave on that, we have given within the last few years on other developments in the area. So, we walk a thin line, because if not, we can be sued very quickly over that stuff.
I got you. I'm just, you know, we have the Dollar General, which is proximate across the street from that property.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a big Dollar General. It's like a little mom-and-pop store.
Yeah.
You know, this thing is going to be massive. Do you not agree? So, is there anything we can do about it, other than appealing the decision?
I'm going to get the, once we've heard everybody, I'm going to let the attorney talk to us for just a minute.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tom?
Mayor, I have several cards on, for audience to be heard on other topics.
Other topics.
Correct.
Derek, do, do you mind explaining where we are in the process? If these folks want to try to change what the City Commission did, what they would need to do? And exactly where we are with talking to attorneys and things like that, in case people have not heard the complete storyline at this point?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, I spoke to Butch Blanchard this morning. He's the seller's lawyer. He's the lawyer for the college that has owned this property for over ten years now. He said that the tenants will be given a proposal that they can stay until the end of the year, rent-free. That's not consistent with what they said here, which was the end of January. The commission does have an option. It's, it's very rarely used, and it would be a substantial headache. But you could try to set aside the prior vote based on the representations that were made here that ended up not being true, or at least are not true today. That option exists. But in terms of the residents, you have thirty days to file what's called a petition for cert with the Circuit Court to appeal any decision that you think may have been wrongfully decided. So, that's your remedy at this point legally. I can continue to work with the buyer and seller's lawyer to see if they'll extend that to the end of January. If the commission wants me to, the majority of the commission, I'm happy to do that. But so far, it sounds like both the buyer's lawyer and the seller's lawyer have committed to the end of the year rent-free. And if the tenants accept that, then they'll be gone by the end of the year.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I have a question. Am I clear in understanding that if they had not come, asked for variances, they would not have come before the commission? They could have built whatever they wanted to there?
The variance allows the commission to give discretion to deny or approve. So, you had total discretion to deny or approve because of those waivers that were requested.
But had they not asked for variances...
Had they not, then, then yes, you would be required to, the city would be required to approve the plans as submitted, because they were already vested for that use under the code.
I wanted them to understand that even, they came before us because of the variances. But if not, they could have built whatever they wanted to, right?
Within the code.
Yes, within the code. So, it isn't just about that we were giving them permission to do what they wanted to, but I think that they were asking for variances to kind of soften the impact of what they were doing. I didn't vote for this because of what the city could get out of it or what financial things we might benefit from. That's not why I did. But I knew that they, if, if it were not for the variances, they could build whatever they wanted to. And so, that was my concern and one of the reasons why I did vote on it. Also, I was in favor, I guess, more accepting of what they said, because they were giving time. I am very disappointed that they have changed that. But I was very, I guess, more leaning towards it because of that. So, I do have some concerns that they would reneg on what they said that they would do. But I just want everybody to understand that we, we try to do everything that we can to protect our citizens. But at this, at this point, and in what we did, they could have built anything that they wanted to within the code and not, they would not, none of you, they would not even be here in front of us. So, that's what my concern is. And I wanted everybody to understand that, as to the best of my ability.
Yes, I agree. I agree with Commissioner Lee. I voted not for what everybody thinks. It's, again, about personal property rights. I did listen. We do listen, okay? And I did state last time that this is personal property rights. You know, nobody wants us telling you all what to do with your home or your land. We can't tell the Asbury College what to do with their land. I was the one that asked, "Could we have ninety days?" Because it didn't even come up, okay? Am I disappointed? You know I'm disappointed. It moved farther, or closer, to the ninety days than just the end of November. That same day, or the very next day, I reached out to the sheriff. We talked about the area. There's a lot of, there's traffic in there. I live over there, okay? It's multi-jurisdictional. Sheriff said, "Nan, you realize you have more coverage over there than a lot of places." And I'm aware of that. He said, I said, "Can you please try to pick up the pace, the pace a little bit? Try to, you know, patrol over there a little bit more." You know, I talked to our chief. Everybody's trying, okay? It's a, it's a county. It's, you know, it's city. It's, you know, in the county. It's, it's a close area. To the point, I even asked him, because I know one of the concerns was the traffic on South Fish Camp. I said, "Can you please, can we please work on getting a speed, you know, the electronic speed limit signs facing from Grand Island shores to Forty-four, okay?" I haven't gone down the road yet to check, okay? And then we've had some other issues with the sheriff passing, the whole nine yards. Has it been up there yet? Okay, that's fine. Then I will follow up with the sheriff, okay? You'll have to talk to Lake County, ma'am. So, we did listen. We did try to compromise. It is a personal property rights thing, that House and Senate bill passed this year. So, we did listen. We did. Like Commissioner Lee, am I disappointed? I will tell you, because the very next day, I saw, they took it to Facebook. First phone call I made was to our attorney. The second phone call I made was to Mr. Carino. I said, "Please help. Let's try to get this resolved. What in the world is going on?" And process started. He, he reached out. Mr. Carino's been out there twice. So, we are trying. We are trying. And we are trying to compromise here. But again, as Commissioner Lee said, if they needed no waivers, we wouldn't even be sitting here having this conversation. We're not even aware of it. If they pass, if, if, if everything goes through Ms. Barnes, the way it's supposed to, with, you know, getting the permit and everything, and they go through all the guidelines, we'll never see it. The only reason we saw it was because of the waivers that they asked for. So, we do listen. We are here. I will follow up again with the sheriff on the electronic sign. All right?
Don't you want to say anything, ma'am? As Nan and, and, no, ma'am, we're closed for this section, okay? As Nan and Emily said, we do listen. It, it, it came down to me as a property rights thing. And it's solely property rights. I cannot sit here and tell you what kind of tax money's coming in off that property. I never look at that. It's property rights. I don't want anybody to tell me what to do with my property. You shouldn't. And those folks that own that property should not have to answer to it. However, when it comes to disappointment, I know some of you reached out to me, and I tried. If I've missed calling you back, I'm sorry. I tried to call as many people back that day that I could, and I tried to talk to everybody that I could. At this point, the best thing that I could do was let the attorneys try to work things out. Derek is very gifted at what he does. And if I, if we let him work on it, he can probably get some things done. If it was in my power, I'd open it back up, and I'd boat the thing down today. It's something that I really can't do. There's a lot of things I don't do well with, and one of them is lying to me. And I felt like we were lied to that night when we all left here. I thought it was settled, and I don't think that that's what happened. So, I apologize to you. You have the recourse of going to a Circuit Court and getting them to handle things. Or let, we'll ask Derek to, if it's okay with the rest of the commission, to continue working with the attorneys, to see what we can come up with, Derek, to get a fair and balanced. I will tell you that the city staff, people in this community have reached out to the T-shirt place and to the bakery, trying to help relocate.
That is true.
But folks, when you're only paying a certain amount of rent, it's hard to relocate a business. It is very hard in the climate we have today. And we're aware of what they're paying in renting some of those buildings out there. And you would be shocked, probably, if you knew the rent. So, no matter what we do, our hands get tied there as well. We want to help. We don't want to lose those businesses. And if we could relocate them into the Eustis area, we would love it. We'd love to have them in the city. But it's just something that's hard to do. But we're going to continue. Derek will continue to make contacts. We'll continue to try to help find them a place to relocate. But at this point, that's where we stand with this. So, I appreciate y'all being here tonight. Appreciate you being respectful again this evening. I know you care about your area out there, and it is a beautiful area. And I know traffic is bad. When I went to Eustis Hypes Elementary as a student, growing up here, one of my best friends and his sister were hit on their bicycles out there. He lived and she died. And that was the first time in my life I experienced a close friend's death. So, those type things stick with you through the years. And I will tell you, it's only gotten worse out there. So, we have a traffic problem, and that traffic problem's all over this area. So, we're going to have to work with our chief and with Sheriff Grinnell to get things taken care of out there and to try to slow it down a little bit. But we're doing what we can. We are listening to you. So, thank you for being here this evening. Tom, let's go ahead with the meeting.
Cindy Newton.
Hi, Cindy.
Good evening. Excuse me. Cindy Newton, unincorporated, Lake County. As you go forward making decisions tonight, I just wanted to remind you that we believe the Thrill Hill area, the annexation, does not meet the Florida statutes. And also that two of those properties are outside the JPA, and they're also within the rural protection area. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Tammy Peña.
Hey, Tammy.
Hi, Tammy Peña, unincorporated, Lake County. Nice to see you all again. Today, I stand before you, asking you to use caution in what's being asked for you for Agenda Item 7.1, to agree and approve the draft of notices for extension to the... to the DEO and effective parties for ordinances 2033, 2036, and 2039 FLU amendments. What has been provided to you in the staff packet for your approval is an extension to all three of these ordinance to a date of May 11th, 2022. One year past the May 11th, 2021 deadline date to adopt. However, only one of the three property owners have requested this deadline extension past the May 11th, 2021 deadline date, not all three. Ordinance 2033, Ms. Harper provided a signed document in your packet, asking for an extension to May 11th, 2021. Ordinance 2039, Mount Dora Gross, Mr. Simpson provided a signed document also in your packet, asking for an extension to May 11th, 2021. Therefore, the prepared DEO and effective party draft notices, number 20-04 ESR and number 20-06 ESR for ordinance 2033 and 2039 are inconsistent and do not match the property owner's requests as they state to extend to one year past the deadline date of May of 11th, 2021. I believe that for this ordinance, you can only take action on one of the three property owners to move forward today. Because if you choose to move forward with these, you're doing it without the property owner's request to extend it into 2022 unless they're here tonight to advise you. So I just wanted to put a word of caution on those there. And here's a copy of the letter that's in your staff report.
Did you give one to Mary?
No, sorry.
Okay, they're, they're in the packet.
They are in the packet.
They are in the packet, okay, yes.
Thank you Tammy. Jerry Brown.
Evening Jerry.
Hello folks, thank for the evening tonight, sympathize with y'all's job, it's, it's work. I've seen it many, many years go through here, and I know it's a thankless job. And hanging there, I do want to mention what I'm thinking about at the properties downtown here in Waterman. Thanks for taking the torch on that one. I know you guys got a tough job on that one, so hang in there with that on that, that's a, that's a whole nother world. I'm here tonight about the annexations on the north. I ask your, your, your patience on this folks, we, we, it hasn't, it hasn't been your fault or our fault. Basically what's happened is this thing has been delayed due to the bureaucracy in Tallahassee. We can't control what's going on out there, we were on the agenda in, in June, we thought we were on the agenda there in the fall. Now I'm told by council in Tallahassee, we're definitely on the agenda in February. These guys are going to come and make a, make a notice there. So it's not, it's not been your, your concern or your fault or our fault that there's been a delay, it's simply been the bureaucracy in, in Tallahassee. And I think we all know patience is definitely required when it comes to real estate and government, especially when it comes to Tallahassee. So I ask you guys to take that into consideration also on this extension of this thing. I also want to, want to say if, if we don't, if this doesn't go through, it's going to, we're going to start all over again. And it's going to be a mess again. And we're going to have to start from the beginning on this thing and go back to day one on this, and it's, it could be months and months getting that going. On another aspect of it, it's basically not costing this city of Eustis anything to wait a little bit. We're only talking about three months here y'all. We're going to find out what's going on, we're going to be able to get a ruling from Tallahassee and what's going on on their agenda from what I understand. And council says, again, we're firmly on that agenda finally after they changed board of, tried, board of, changed members on the board and what have you. So I'd like to move forward on that, on another aspect, I'm going to shift off of that and talk a little bit about, really, I think it was really disappointing how we, your authority got so usurped on this thing. I mean, the county came in here, we go for a simple, simple annexation for, for some property here, and suddenly a little strip of land gets given to somebody else in, in, in a week's notice when two brand-new county commissioners are in, they probably don't know what's going on here. And, and it didn't go through any due diligence process, didn't do anything, all of a sudden bam, they give away some county property. And, and not only did they not go to the due diligence process, they, oh, they did it specifically so the city of Eustis wouldn't expand. It was pretty simple, I mean, you can look at all the legalities of it, but that's basically what happened. So we need to stand up, I think, as commissioners here, and, and give a signal back to the county commission. I mean, isn't this our city that we want to run? Do we have some legally, legal way that a sharp county commissioner picked up out of the way, picked up to, to make this thing, to throw a monkey wrench in this whole deal? And that's what happened, so we need to send a signal out that we can stand up, not only to the county commission, but I think also to Tallahassee. I think we'll get resolution on this, but it's going to take a little bit of patience. So hang in here, we're about to cross the finish line, we're close to it. I'm just saying, let's please extend, extend the extension, let's this thing, let's this thing play out, and let's see what Tallahassee says about what our county commission did to us. And then we'll see what goes on, so that's my request. Again, appreciate the job y'all do, I know, I know it's thankless, thank you.
Tim Green.
Good evening Tim.
Good evening.
Tim Green, President Green Consulting Group, actually represent the Brown family on this, so since Mr. Brown was here to speak for himself, I don't have a lot to add. Except that we did request the extension, and we appreciate if you take the time to extend it, ask DEO to extend it so we can get on the Florida Communities Trust Board Agenda. They've only had one meeting this whole year, they just, they're having it in December actually, and they wouldn't put this on that until later. So we were just asked for your patience to see what they say about this action that the county took.
Thank you Tam.
I've never had the county give away a piece of land and promise that our taxpayers would maintain that piece of land, ever. It's a first, thank you.
Thank you.
Major Stacy.
Good evening, Major Stacy, 221 Lee Road, Suite 27, Winter Park, Florida, 32789. I agree with all the statements that were previously made, I think anything further, I'd just be parroting.
Thank you Major.
Those are all the cards, Mayor.
Alright, anybody else that'd like to address the commission about something that is not on the agenda? Yes ma'am.
Good evening, I'm here tonight just to reiterate the fact that we believe this is not a legal annexation according to the Florida statutes, 171, it's not continuous, does not meet the minimum percentage required for annexation. Thank you.
If you'll just state your name.
Oh, Richard Duncan.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody, we'll close the audience to be heard portion. Come down now to the consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda this evening, is there anything anybody wants to pull for discussion? Not hearing any, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you ma'am.
I second.
Thank you sir, any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call please.
Commissioner Loup Smith, aye. Commissioner Con, aye. Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Tom, is the folks from East Central Florida Regional Planning Council here?
They are, do you?
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to wait and roll it into the end?
Why don't we do it as part of 6.4 if that's okay?
I, I'm perfect with that if that's okay with everybody else.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Attorney?
Do we want to move 6.4 up there, or do it?
Let's move, let's go ahead and move it up.
Okay, that would be Resolution 2197 under Agenda Item 6.4. Resolution, the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida approving and ratifying an Orange Blossom Trail US 441 Brownsfield Coalition Memorandum of Understanding for Severability and an Effective Date. Mr. Carino.
So we have, if it's okay, I'll have the East Central Florida Regional Planning Commission folks present first, and then I have a resolution for you to consider following that. So I'd like to introduce Daphne Green. And as she's coming up, I would like to say, through the transition, I probably have not been as responsive a partner as I could have been. And so I do want to commend the staff, Daphne, Ken, Charles Ray is here this evening. I, I want to thank them for being good partners and having patience with me in that I probably have not been as responsive as I could have been, so thank you.
Daphne, welcome to Eustis.
Oh, thank you so much ma'am. We actually, oh, there it is. Well, I wanted to apologize first for being tardy this evening, there's no excuse for that, but thank you so much for, for having me here.
Daphne, Daphne.
Okay.
Once Sarita moves away from you, do you remind, do you mind pulling your mask down just while you present? I hate to do that, but it's so muffled.
No, I understand, that's much better. Well, good evening council, thank you. I'm Daphne Green, I'm with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And we're here today to talk to you a little bit about our brownfields program and the brownfield coalition to which your city is a member. With me today, I also have our consultant with PPM, Mr. Charles Ray, and our intern Ken Story, who's also working on the project. So I'm going to go ahead and jump in and give you a brief background on the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So the council is one of 10 RPCs within the state of Florida. It was founded in 1962, and its sole purpose is to provide technical assistance services to our 13-member counties and cities throughout our eight-county region. And so in the past, we've been, we've had the pleasure of providing some technical assistances to the city of Eustis. So we've been able to provide a pipeline emergency response initiative, and that was done to provide the city with, the fire department with a gas director's system. And we've also been able to work on a greenhouse gas inventory, and that was done by the Regional Resiliency Coalition, and they're more focused on resilience. And that inventory was more so focused on looking at how we can improve air quality. More about the RPC, so within the RPC, we have an Economic Development Program. And this program has, has a number of areas of expertise, one being strategic planning and grants. And this area's been successful in the last 10 years, it has been able to attract over 15 million in grant funds, and also provide a return of investment of over 259%, which means essentially for all the, for $2 that goes into the program, we've been able to provide $2.50 to our partnering communities and cities. So that's been somewhat successful. We've also been doing health and regional food systems planning, we've done economic impact analysis, and we're also trying to branch out into community redevelopment and revitalization using the brownfield program, which is more development-focused. So the program is going to be more so focused on the Orange Blossom Trail US 441 corridor. It's funded by the Federal Brownfields Program that's led by the US Environmental Protection Agency. And its main goal is to address redevelopment or revitalization of properties known as brownfields. And these brownfield properties may or may not be contaminated due to the past, that contamination may be related to the past uses of that property. Like I said, it may or may not be contaminated. So that title of brownfield just kind of opens it up for funding that makes it easier to develop that project or develop that property because of the different financial or legal constraints or the appearance of it. It's been probably disinvested for some time. So some examples of those properties are gas stations, old landfills, old factories, auto repair shops, properties like that. And so the brownfield program is wanting to incite redevelopment of these sites using funding from EPA. And there are a number of program benefits, redevelopment benefits that come from this kind of work. I actually did a health impact assessment on a brownfield program in my previous job, and that health lens kind of helped me to understand the different equity, public health, and environmental justice benefits that are stemmed from brownfield redevelopment. But for now, we'll just focus on the fact that it opens up the opportunities to revitalize these properties that otherwise wouldn't have had a good opportunity to be redeveloped. It also serves as a catalyst for neighborhood-wide improvements by opening up new sources of funding, and also helps to protect and preserve those different natural, natural and environmental resources that we want to protect from potential contamination. It helps to reduce blight and take development pressures off green space by creating a new form of infill development. So the Assessment Grant Award, we've been awarded this by EPA, and the focus of the grant will be into our coalition cities of Apopka, Eustis, Kissimmee, and Longwood. We've been awarded $600,000, and that will go over our three-year period for the project. And we're going to be working, and we've already even began our environmental site assessments. We're going to be working to ensure that this work is done, and we make sure that the majority of the funds, at least 86% of the funds go back into our partnering coalition cities as community services. So we have done some preliminary work in the past to support brownfield, the brownfield program. This program has been actually five years in the making, we've been wanting to get this funding down, so we've got a lot of energy, that's been pent up and we're wanting to, to put it back. But before we applied, we did some preliminary GIS analysis and found at least 120 potential brownfield sites along the Orange Blossom Trail corridor. And from that analysis, we were able to hone in on five potentials, or five high priority sites. And one of them is in the city of Eustis. I believe that's the Waterman Hospital site. So this is a quick kind of overview of where we are with the project, where we've been, and where we are now. So in the early months of this year, in May, we were awarded the grant by EPA. And then we went into the summer months working hard to inform our coalition cities of the grant. We worked hard to develop the work program that would be a framework for the program. And we also began developing our consultant RFQ, we've onboarded our consultant as well. They are PPM consultants, and we're happy to have them. And then we also worked hard to develop a media kit and other community involvement materials that we want to use as a framework for involving the community and also all those different community stakeholders, such as developers, property owners, business owners, into this program because we're definitely going to want their buy-in and their input. And to the, the, end of October is when we actually had our kickoff meeting. So the end of October is when our program began, we are in, we are working, and we are getting brownfield programming begin, started. We drafted our inter-local agreement, which we're here to present on today. And again, we have began on our Phase 1 assessments, and we'll be carrying on with those into the 2022. Other current tasks include working on a community involvement plan. We understand and appreciate the role that the community plays in this kind of program. They know more than us, you know, where these potential sites are and how to approach them. So we're going to, you know, submit that community involvement plan so that we are enforcing, you know, the community being involved in the project. We're also working on our, developing our brownfield advisory committee. That's also a tool that we're going to use to bring different community stakeholders into this process. We're also conducting our Phase 1 and 2 assessments. Our consultants are hard at work at that, and we're doing now presenting our inter-local agreement to our coalition cities. And so essentially today, we've come here to propose the action of you all approving the agreement for us to continue working as a coalition and implementing this program, and also to reaffirm to you that this program is not going to be any additional cost to your city, and we're not wanting it to be any additional workload. We're just wanting to keep communication ties open so that we can work to develop the brownfield advisory coalition, and also to, you know, implement these brownfield redevelopment plans that we're hoping to get done. And so that's essentially all I have for you today. I am happy to take any comments or questions, my contact information is also there for anyone who, who would like it. Thank you.
Daphne, thank you for your presentation, and the organization you work for is a great organization. They've done a lot of great things for the East Central Florida area, so keep up the good work.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody have a question of Daphne?
You say you identified a property in Eustis?
Yes, yes, that's the Waterman Hospital site. And we're hoping to identify more in the future, hopefully.
And that, that's a site that's been identified for years and was actually part of the grant application to EPA. We have actually put it on hold for right now because we, we would, if we do a transaction with Atrium, they would need to be on board with the fact that we'd be doing Phase 1 and potentially Phase 2. If we don't move forward with Atrium, we could potentially move forward with the city as property owner. But we've held off on that because we were thinking we want that to resolve it, so.
Understood.
Emily, anything? Karen, anything? Mr. Attorney, give it back to you.
Thank you sir, would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution 2197? Seeing then the public comment portion of this hearing is closed.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution Number 21-97, what's the will of our commission?
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I say something?
Yes please.
There was a, basically a Scrivener's error was identified in the agreement that was in your packet. It's in Section 13, and it's really about basically contacts, notifications. And so that's been corrected in that Section 13. I wanted to bring that to your attention in that it is a very slight difference in what was in your packet. So if I, if I may reiterate, there's no grant match related to this, no cost to the city. There is some staff time involved, we are going to be part of the Brownfields Advisory Committee. I have been in contact with Eileen Traumatana from Trout Lake about her interest in serving on the Brownfields Advisory Committee. While it is not part of our code as an official city commission-appointed position, I would like to make sure that there are no objections to my asking Eileen to serve on that Brownfields Advisory Committee. And other than that, I would recommend approval for the resolution.
Everybody good with Eileen serving on that? Okay. All right, then. All right, commissioners, uh, we have before us Resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-seven. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
I'll second it.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner Lou Hoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Daphne, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
You too.
Resolution twenty-one eighty-nine, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Eustis, Florida, approving a preliminary subdivision plat modification, phase-two, with waivers for the Royal Brothers subdivision, a seventy-seven lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately fifteen point thirteen acres on the east side of David Walker Drive, approximately one thousand feet north of Mount Homer Road. Ms. Lori Barnes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, presenting the Royal Brothers preliminary subdivision plat modification for phase-two. Uh, the property owner, um, is Royal Brothers, and the Unitarian Universalist Church, S.M. and E. is their representative. They are requesting a preliminary subdivision plat modification. If the commission would remember, in September, phase-one of the Royal Brothers subdivision was approved by Resolution tw- twenty-one eight, twenty-one sixty-four, and that approved the seventy-seven lot, single-family residential subdivision. At that time, staff explained that phase-two, which is an emergency access point at West Seminole Avenue, was delayed due to a second reading of the annexation ordinance for that property. With the addition of this point-two-six acre parcel, the total site area is fifteen point one-three acres, again, just north of the Unitarian Church, uh, on the corner of Mount Homer Road and David Walker Drive. The site has a future land use designation of mixed commercial residential and is within a suburban corridor design district. The updated project statistics show, uh, that the overall density will be five point zero-nine dwelling units per acre versus the maximum of twelve in the mixed commercial residential designation. And the open space, park space, and impervious surface area are consistent with the city's regulations. Uh, the phase-two area is shown in yellow on this site plan. Again, it is established by the, uh, site plan that will be approved hopefully by the commission tonight for phase-two, that it will be utilized for emergency access only. Uh, the applicant has also added a waiver request to this phase-two application. They've been working with Duke Energy to develop a photometric plan for the site, and unfortunately, Duke Energy has not been substantially responsive in providing that plan. I think as all the local governments and engineers in this area, the volume of work is substantially high. Um, the applicant has asked that this be deferred to their final construction completion certification. Staff has no issues. Uh, the liability will be on the applicant, and they will be responsible to provide a code-compliant plan before the city will grant any final construction completion certification for the project. This preliminary subdivision plat modification was advertised per the requirements in the city's land development regulations, and the applicant posted the site. Uh, the Development Services Department has received no contact from the public, no inquiries or correspondence on this application. Staff recommends approval, um, with the conditions included in the resolution before you. Jason Rostak from S.M. and E. is here, if you have questions for him.
Any questions from the commission? Would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution twenty-one eighty-nine? Seeing none, the public comment portion of this hearing is closed.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution number twenty-one dash eighty-nine. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
I'll give it to Willie, and then man second it. Any, any more comments or concerns? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner Lou Hoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one ninety, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Eustis, Florida, approving a modification to a previously-approved site plan with waivers for Lulu's Candles in Cobb Commerce Park, expanding the project area to include Lot Seven, increasing the site area from two-point-six-two acres to a total of five-point-five acres, providing for additional parking and requesting an additional waiver. Ms. Barnes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Development Services Director, uh, presenting Resolution twenty-one ninety for the Lulu's Candles expansion. The applicant is Canco General Contractors on behalf of Conchaniva. Lulu's Candles. The modification, um, is, is a request with one waiver. The previously-approved Resolution twenty-two eighty-eight approved the manufacturing facility on Lot Eight of the Cobb Commerce Park. Um, this modification adds Lot Seven to point-nine-three acres to provide some additional parking and request a waiver to the dumpster enclosure specifications in the city's regulations. Uh, the site has now expanded to a total of five-point-five acres on the north side of Cobb Drive. The future land use designation is mixed commercial industrial, and the site is located in a rural district, design district designation. The site plan shows the addition of parking spaces and a generator on the southeast portion of Lot Seven. The dumpster enclosure is shown in yellow. The waiver would allow a vinyl fence enclosure as opposed to a masonry wall, a, a block wall enclosure as provided in our code. The applicant has cited supply chain issues in regard to the block required to build the ma, the enclosure. Um, and given the location of the dumpster enclosure, the, uh, landscape hedge provided for around the dumpster on the landscaping plan approved with the original application, and the future construction on Lot Seven that would block view of this dumpster enclosure from the public, staff is recommending approval of the waiver. This application was noticed in accordance with our land development regulations, and the applicant posted the site. Staff has received no contact from the public or correspondence regarding this request. This, uh, site plan modification with waivers is generally consistent with the land development regulations. Staff recommends approval. Uh, Ted Wicks, the engineer on the project, is available for questions if you have them, as am I.
Any questions?
I just have one question for you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do I need to recuse myself?
Because of the association issues we discussed, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Would anyone like to speak on Resolution twenty-one ninety? Seeing none, we'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution number twenty-one dash ninety. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner Lou Hoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-one ninety-one, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Eustis, Florida, approving a modification to a previously-approved site plan with waivers for a storage depot on approximately seven-point-six acres on the northeast corner of State Road Nineteen and McKinley Road, providing for the addition of thirty-six thousand two hundred square feet of additional storage building space, and requesting waivers. Heather Cronin.
Good evening. I have for you tonight Resolution twenty-one ninety-one for a storage depot modification of a previously-approved site plan. The applicant on this is Wicks Engineering Services for McKinley, Inc. They are requesting approval for additional self-storage buildings on the site. Other than the two requested waivers, this is, this is, uh, consistent with the land development regulations and could be approved administratively if it were not for these waivers. The project site comprises approximately seven-point-six acres at sixteen-three-zero-one McKinley Road. The site is located on the northeast corner of State Road Nineteen and McKinley Road. As you can see here, the site is in the general industrial land use and the suburban corridor design district. Here we have the site plan currently on the property. There is a, um, an office building as well as approximately forty-five thousand square feet of storage buildings that are currently existing on the property and utilized for the storage depot's self-storage business. Prior plan approvals were granted in two thousand and eight, then later in two thousand and eighteen, when a modification was submitted. So, currently, the applicant is requesting approval of their site plan modification with waivers for storage depot to add new storage buildings. There is one waiver to allow the use of the industrial lot type, and the second waiver regarding time limitations and expiration of approval to permit project phasing with final build-out completion anticipated and planned to be in spring of two thousand and twenty-six. The self-storage and mini-storage use is permitted in general industrial, but the subject property is in the suburban corridor design district, which does not prove, which does not, uh, permit an industrial lot type. So, therefore, they are requesting a waiver to allow the industrial lot type. The site currently does contain non-conforming buildings, which, should the waiver to allow the industrial lot type were approved, this would, um, bring this to be conforming with the lot typology. You can see here the elevations proposed. They are proposing design features for the building fronting on State Road Nineteen despite the industrial lot type not requiring these, uh, features. Staff does find this waiver request to be reasonable and sufficiently mitigated with the building design, as I stated, on State Road Nineteen. The second waiver is a request for, um, waiver to the time limitations. The code requires that within twelve months of site plan approval, that the applicant must submit final engineering and construction plans or request an extension. The code also requires that within six months of approval of development plans or final engineering and construction plans that they begin construction, which would be demonstrated by applying for and obtaining building permits. And the applicant may apply for extensions of time not to exceed twelve months per extension. They are requesting this waiver due to the size of the project and financial constraints. The site work and landscaping would be done within the first phase to enhance the physical appearance of the site. And here you can see a breakdown of their, uh, proposed phasing of the site with the final completion being in spring of two thousand and twenty-six. This was noticed per the land development regulations, and the applicant also posted the property with signage. Staff has not received any inquiries from the public, um, regarding this request. Staff is recommending approval. The plan is, along with its waivers, generally consistent with the land development regulations, and staff anticipates the waivers will have no negative impacts on the health and well-being of the public. The applicant is here for any questions, as am I.
Any questions?
Yes.
Heather, could you go back to the, uh, uh, the picture of the, the actual?
Yes.
Okay, which part would be completed first? The center?
Landscape. So, ultimately, the landscaping and the site work would be first.
Yes, that's part one, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, part two is what?
So, phase two, well, phase one also includes three of their buildings, and then, phase two has three more of the buildings.
Yeah. Can you go back to the chart of phase one, two, and three?
Yes. Here we are.
Okay. So, N, P, and Q.
So, do we know which buildings those are?
Yeah.
Go back to the, you're gonna have to toggle back and forth a little bit.
Yeah.
Let me, let, I'd like to see N, P, and Q. If it's.
Don't believe I have elevations for those.
Ted, Ted, can you help us with that? Do you know which ones, or? Perfect, thank you.
For the record, my name is Rick Hortonstein with Wicks Engineering. And on this, it, I know, if you can see, the upper building in that cross-hashed area?
Do you have the little?
The first, the first building.
Can you go back to the, the picture of the building?
Uh, well, the site plan, the, the site plan, I'm, I'm gonna show you which buildings are in which phase.
Do you have the red pointer that we can see?
I, I wish I did.
Well, we're not gonna be able to see it anyway, the way they're turning.
I didn't know if it would come through or not.
We're not gonna be able to see it.
I didn't know, I, I thought it would come through.
Is that it?
No.
No. Yeah. All right, very good. Okay, I can't see it on the screen. You're not gonna be able to.
It doesn't matter, I, it doesn't come through.
Anyway, the, um, the first two buildings in the hashed area, which is N and P, and the first phase of, is also, uh, building Q. I think that's Q. Yes, Q. That would be what we would pull from it.
That's way better, thank you. So.
Okay, gotcha.
Where's Q, Willie?
And then, the second phase would be buildings M and O, and building R. And that would be completed in two thousand and twenty-four. And then, the last phase would be building S, which are the fancy front ones that had the additional, uh, architectural work and everything to make it more compliant outside of the, uh, industrial. So, that, that's, that's our phasing schedule on that.
So, the pretty part will be done last?
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Uh, well, part of the pretty part will be done last. The first two phases, those first two buildings is also part of the pretty part. And we would be doing all of our site preparation and our landscaping and all in phase-one at the beginning, so then, it also helps obstruct visibility of some of the other construction.
Any other questions? Would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution twenty-one ninety-one? Seeing none, the public comment portion of this hearing is closed.
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution number twenty-one dash ninety-one. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. We got a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Who was second? I couldn't hear.
Uh, yeah. All right, we have a first and a second. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lou Hoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, other business, extension of adoption period for ordinance. All those right there.
Lori will be presented.
Lori, you're gonna present?
Lori Barnes, Development Services Director. This discussion item is regarding ordinances twenty-three, twenty-thirty-three, twenty-thirty-six, and twenty-thirty-nine. These ordinances were the ordinances associated with the Thrill Hill annexations. The annexation ordinance have nothing to do with the topic to be discussed tonight. The comprehensive plan amendments to assign a future land use designation. The comprehensive plan amendments to assign a future land use designation per the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan is subject to requirements in the Florida statutes. They are also subject to state review. When these ordinances were first brought forward to the City Commission on first reading, the City Commission approved them for transmittal to the state for expedited state review. That was completed and the ordinances were brought back to the commission anticipated to be adopted in December of 2020. Our 180-day period to adopt per the Florida statutes expired in May. Without this extension, which simply requires notification to the state Department of Economic Opportunity and to any affected parties as defined in the Florida statutes, simply gives the commission an opportunity to act on the land use map amendment ordinances should the opportunity ever present itself. That is the only effect providing for extension under Florida statutes for these amendments will result in. One thing that I wanted to mention, the comments about the only one property owner making the request, I think it's clear that there was a typo in the letters from Carol Harper and Mount Dora Groves. You received an email from Major Stacy at Appian Engineering this afternoon supporting this request. He is the representative of both of those property owners and he stood before you tonight indicating that he was in favor of this request. We can certainly reach out to those property owners and ask them to provide an updated record eliminating the typo. If the commission decides to move forward with noticing the extension, the only thing that happens is that the public, if they are not already aware that this has been continued 12 times, will be made aware that it could be brought up before the commission up to and including through May 11th, 2022. This extension would give the commission opportunity to act once again if the opportunity presents itself. Either if and when the Florida Community Trusts make a decision regarding the transfer of land, or if and when the city and the county are successful in negotiating some density constraints for the properties in the eastern area. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions of Lori?
Yes, sir.
Karen, are you in favor of filing for an extension?
Yes.
Emily?
Willie? Absolutely.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
File for an extension, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next discussion, Patels regarding Colonial Inn Motel. Tom, do you wanna kind of bring us up, or Derek, do you wanna bring us up to speed of where we are and then we'll let the Patels come up and speak, or?
Sure, per the invitation made at the last meeting, Mr. Patel is here. And the representations that were made before was that he is the heir, that he will be inheriting this Colonial Hotel and that, or Motel, and that he's prepared to make representations to you in terms of how this is going to be cured moving forward. You have a lot of options here. Frankly, you have all the cards. I mean, they're in foreclosure. They're very egregious violations right now. And if they come up with a plan that satisfies you, you have a lot of options at that point. We can either have periodic inspections to ensure they're on schedule, consistent with what you want. We could also keep the foreclosure open, that would be my recommendation. We could also enter into an agreement where they make certain repairs by certain timeframes. And if they don't, they have to give us a deed for the property, a deed in lieu of foreclosure. Those are, are common in the foreclosure process, so you can avoid time and expense of litigation. And then you acquire the property by deed. So that's where we're at right now, ma'am.
Perfect. Before I ask the Patels to come up, help me, both chiefs, can you come up? Chief Capri, can you give us an update? Anything you've noticed there at the motel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Craig Capri, police chief. I have a report that we did, we did some research, and going back to 2010, we've been there 1,472 times, made 19 arrests. We've been there 147 times already this year alone. Crimes associated with the location, robbery, aggravated battery, assault, we've done two certain narcotic search warrants on the property, numerous drugs and prostitution crimes. It goes on and on and on. If you looked at, it's probably the most horrific property in the City of Eustis right now. And I have zero tolerance for this type of activity. This is classic greed merchant at its best. Blatant disregard for the community, let's make as much money as we can. And the only way, in my experience in dealing with greed merchants that don't care about our city, is you gotta hit 'em in the pocketbook. That's the only way to get their attention. And you hammer them with fines and you come after them until the prop, the property's in compliance. I wouldn't let up on any fines. Once the property is done, then we inspect it, then you talk about waiving fines and fees. I just don't know what kind of clientele is gonna be attracted to this location. I've been there a couple times, and I've only been here eight months, and I got a stolen gun out there, firearm, a stolen firearm out there, out of a room, shots were fired inside the room. So, and the place looked like it was disgusting, disgusting. And I'm very proud of this city, and I think we don't need places like this in our city that are gonna attract the criminal element. I'm trying to drive it out of here. We don't want criminal activity here and calls for service and being tied up. I don't feel sorry for the owners, absolutely not. Especially the gentleman that owns this, he knows what he's doing. You can play ignorance all day long, but to let this happen, to go to a place 1,472 times, enough's enough. The citizens don't deserve this. And as long as I'm chief, I'm not gonna tolerate any kind of crime or any type of quality-of-life issues in this city. I'm gonna, and, and my experience is, you hit 'em in the pocketbook, that's the only way you get their attention. The only way you're gonna get their attention and get something done is when you hit 'em with fines and you go after the properties. They're not afraid of arrest or anything like that, it's, it's money financially to get them to do the right thing.
Chief, thank you.
I got a question. Chief, how many times has the, the owner called?
Oh, um, I believe it was like 100 times. I don't have the exact number here, that's in my other report, but it was, last time it was like about 100 times over the time period.
Over the course of the last 12 years?
Yeah, the calls from the location, yeah. But my, my officers have dealt with him before, and he's been very uncooperative, from what I'm being told, the, the, the older gentleman, he will not acknowledge them, he won't, he'll go inside, lock the door, and won't, won't, won't help out. But I'm all about helping people, I don't wanna hurt nobody, take nobody, but, but there comes a time where you gotta draw the line with quality of life for our citizens and our residents. And Eustis is an amazing city, we need to move forward, not backwards.
Thank you, chief. Chief Swanson?
Yes, I didn't go as far back as Chief Capri did. I kinda went back and just to see if there was a change in medical calls. We don't go for there as often as they go, because they go in, they cancel us, or we stand by. And if you know it's a block away from the fire station, so pretty often, we can kinda watch what's going on just from the, in the parking lot of our fire station. We did, this year, we averaged about two overdoses a month in that facility. Some of them come out as cardiac arrest, you know, we get there, we treat them as a cardiac arrest. You don't know what it is until they run toxicology or something at the hospital, so we suspect. But as far as coming in overdoses, definitely one a month would be fair to say. We were there as recently as the 18th, which was yesterday, for a medical call, but it came in as a chest, as a chest pain. And I don't, that might be a, for real chest pain, I mean, people go, you know, they're on vacation or whatever, and they might have a heart attack. So it's not really fair to say that that had anything to do with any mood or activities. But we are there quite often, we're very familiar with the property. As far as, on the other side, fire inspections, we, we go in there pretty often, smoke detectors are pulled down, it's an older facility. We do have issues with it because, and it's not, it's not the owner's fault that they didn't have to have a fire alarm system back in the day when it was built. But if, if I had it my way, we'd put some, some stipulations in there, like a monitored fire alarm panel, so when people disable the smoke detectors and things like that, we get, we get notified. Because what happens is people go in there and they do things, and they don't want the detectors to go off such as making drugs or doing whatever, and they disable the detectors. And then we don't find out till the police goes in there and gets us the, the ability to go in and look. So that, that's a continual concern. We were out there recently, and smoke detectors are, are a problem.
Still?
I believe so. I know they went out there within the last day or so due to a complaint. We can't get into all the rooms, understand that when people are in there, we can't get in. Unless the rooms are vacant, then we can get in, so.
Rear key, it's called a ram. We have to.
Yeah. And on the, on the plus, I wait, I see there's a extension cord issue and a sign issue, nothing's really critical at this point. They do fix things, but every time we go back, they're done again.
Every time you go back, what?
Every time we go back, there, there's similar issues.
Same thing.
And it's, 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 it's the clientele. I mean, people damage the rooms, so.
Thank you. Lori, has code enforcement been back in the building over the last couple months or couple weeks?
Mayor, code enforcement has not been since before the foreclosure authorization was brought before the City Commission. Development Services and Code Enforcement, if commission decides to move forward with working with the Patels, has some recommendations we'd like you to consider. Would you like to hear those?
What do you please say?
Like the fire department, code enforcement has not gained access to all of the rooms in the hotel, because without the occupants' permission, we will not enter even if the owner of the property allows access. We've had several conversations with the Patels about the code violations we've identified. There's been much back and forth about the expectation of repair, comments brought to code enforcement of we've done everything, everything has not been addressed. We would recommend that if the commission decides to move forward, that the Patels be required to hire a third, an independent third-party inspector, a building inspection services that's familiar with the International Property Maintenance Code, the Florida Building Code, and the Florida Fire Prevention Code. We're not talking about a regular home inspector, we're talking about a professional, state-licensed third-party. That individual, we would ask to go through the entire building and all of the units to identify the needed repairs and put together a cost estimate for those repairs. You all have seen the proposal from the Patels, and based on a 20, 26-room hotel, it would seem that some of those estimates for repairs might not be that realistic. So we think that a professional should identify and then also provide an estimated cost. In addition to those inspections, we'd expect repair of all the existing violations known to the city now and unknown that may be identified by the third-party inspector. The Patels have discussed removal of the stoves in the units. Along with that, we would require removal of the gas lines to those units, so the stoves could not be put back in at a later date. The gas line to the manager's office apartment, of course, would remain. We would want to ensure that the AC condensation into the walls with electrical was properly addressed. And we would require the installation of the interconnected monitored fire alarm as suggested by Chief Swanson. With that, if anyone tampers with the unit in the room, there's a notification that comes into the office. So that would eliminate the problems of those being disarmed. If after receiving the report from the third-party inspector, the Patels still wish to proceed and make the investment in their property to complete all of the required repairs, staff would recommend entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Patels, the property owner, outlining clearly the expectations and responsibilities of the city and of the property owner. Which improvements should be completed first and what timeframe will be given? We want to make sure that we have some measurable expectations, otherwise we will be continually chasing down this problem. There should be provisions for default in that memorandum of understanding. And the penalty for default could be deed in lieu of foreclosure or proceeding with the foreclosure case that would still be pending but not currently moving forward. Finally, on satisfaction of the conditions of the memorandum of understanding and all of the identified repairs, all of the violations repaired. At that time, the city could terminate the foreclosure proceedings and give the Patels an opportunity to request a reduction of their code enforcement fines. The Development Services Department feels that a reduction to administrative costs, if they bring the property into compliance, should be considered. An investment of those dollars into a property and to bringing it into compliance and improving the appearance of it would mean much more than padding the general fund with code enforcement fines. So with that, that would be Development Services code enforcement recommendation if the commission does wish to move forward negotiating with the Patels.
Thank you, Lori. Ms. Patel, would you all like to step up to the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening. You want your brother to step up with you? Thank you all for being here. You've heard the concerns of our staff.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna let you have the floor, and then I'm gonna let the commission talk to you, okay? Please.
Just to introduce you guys to my brother, Mrs. Suresh Patel. He's five years younger than me, he's 40, I'm 45 now. He's the one who's gonna be taking over. We have tried and tried and tried our best to get Dad to move in with one of us, and he still isn't, but he has been cooperating a little. I, I should say he's 50/50, I think he's been better than he was before.
Yeah.
A lot better than what he was before. He definitely understands that he is not manager anymore, he is just there to sign the checks and pay the credit card bills and let us do our, our job that we need to do to bring the property up to code. In the past two and a half, three weeks, we've done quite a bit of improvements, probably not the improvements that we're, that you guys are looking for, but that's why I was saying, if you guys wanna come out and take a look, well, now that you don't, we'd rather have the private company come out and give us the inspection. I definitely get what you're saying, that's a good idea, we can definitely work on that. Back on the window thing, I did get a call from Dan today. We're gonna go with the front of the windows, we, we are gonna change those out with the double-hung windows. The, the back windows, we were talking about closing them off, we're not taking out the windows that are pre-existing. I called and talked to two different, actually, I called three or four different companies here, engineering companies, two did come, call back, and they gave me the same information that since I'm not taking out the window frames at all, I don't have a window, I don't have a wind issue that I need to resolve, and nor do I have an egress issue, because all of the doors are 36 inches. So I can go ahead and lock those off, not, we're not ta, when I say lock them off, we're not saying put block in there or anything like that. It would be closing them off with insulation, first, we would actually beat it with the silicone, so there's no leaking issue, there's no wind going in and out or anything like that, there's no energy issue there. We would beat up each and every single one of the jealousy windows. I talked to somebody with, Dan, with the windows, with the window company, they're framing it out, putting in the studs, and then they're gonna put in the insulation as thick as the window is, and then they're gonna put the drywall over it. So from the inside, it looks like there was never a window there. And that way, it, like we were talking about the violate, and not on violation, but, um, problem with people breaking in and stuff, that would be a big issue that we would have covered, because no one can break in from the back of the hotel or the motel.
What are you gonna do on the outside?
From the outside, it's gonna look From the outside, it's gonna look just like it is. You wouldn't be able to tell that they've been changed, because it would actually, you don't think that would work?
No, no, that's just me.
Okay. Can I get a suggestion on what you guys would think would work, to block off those back windows?
Lori, legally, can, with the egress issues, 'cause I was gonna make sure you're in compliance.
Okay.
Can they take the windows out and block it up and make it like it's normal supposed to be?
It is possible, but what we would require is a permit and a life safety plan signed and sealed by an architect or an engineer indicating that, that plan is compliant. If the egress is required under the building code or the Florida Fire Prevention Code, then an engineer won't sign and seal a drawing. As far as your proposal to close it off, the exterior of the building is currently stuck out, is that correct?
Block.
It's block. They may be able to treat the covering of the window with a cement and pattern it so that it blends with the existing exterior surface. And then, you know, with, with painting the entire portion of the building, it is possible that it could be made to blend in.
She's at, she's talking about the exterior of the property? Okay.
And I think that this might even resolve itself when you, if, if everybody decides to go through this, to get, hire someone to.
Okay.
You know.
What about the AC drainage into the walls? Has that been addressed? I mean, how can, if you're gonna close all this off, will that be remedied?
It already has been, because the biggest issue was maintenance. They weren't getting cleaned annually like they should be, and the filters weren't being cleaned monthly. That we've taken care of, we took down all of the AC units, we've washed them out. And then wherever we did see damage, we did have the drywall removed and redone. And the ACs are also framed from the inside.
One of the things that, that I'm concerned with this ten-minute set that you've been up, and I appreciate you being up.
Yes.
We, we asked for this to be set to today's date, so we could talk to your brother. He hadn't said a word.
Okay.
And he's gonna be the one taking over the property, correct?
Correct.
So I'd love to hear what he has to say.
Okay. Whatever they talk to you about.
Well, basically, we're trying to improve the building and, you know, trying to get everything up to date and, well, it's just been a headache after headache. But, you know, we are trying to improve the whole building itself. And also, we are trying to, you know, getting tenants that do not cause problems. But this is not gonna resolve, you know, in one day. It's just gonna take time for us to get better tenants where, you know, they do not cause problems, basically.
Okay, you, you do understand that where we are didn't happen just because of something that happened this year? This has been an ongoing thing.
Yes, I understand that. And I'm sure you guys are all aware, but I was not, you know, running the property myself, it was my father.
One of the things that, that concerns me is I've had the opportunity to, to not meet your father, but I was in his presence at, at one of the code enforcement board meetings. Strong-willed. Are you going to be able to do what needs to be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One of my concerns is if he's still writing the checks.
No, that, that issue has been resolved also, I am now signing the checks also, so he is not signing the checks anymore.
Excuse me, I've been absent for the past two weeks, because after our meeting last week, or two, two weeks ago, I did leave. I was no, I did not know you guys went to the bank, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I just, that was a concern, because, you know, I, you know, I sit here and I, I listen to this. Why did this happen?
Uh.
Be honest, we need to know.
Uh, it's just, you know, he's ignorant and I try telling him, you know, over and over that he does need to, you know, improve the customers and he needs to improve the property, but, just because he, he's old and, you know, they do not listen. And that's pretty much it.
What's your game plan for improving the clientele, you know, how are you gonna do that?
Well, right now, anyone that comes to rent the rooms or anything, we are just checking IDs. We're writing everything down. And if we find anybody suspicious, then we do not rent the rooms.
What do you deem suspicious?
Uh, basically, if they're, you know, if they, if they're looking, you know, just out of ordinary that, you know, doesn't fit like a regular person, then we were just trying not to rent them rooms.
Are you, you've removed the, the stoves?
Yes, sir, we did, we did remove the stoves and we kept the gas lines.
How many people do you have that stay, that, that rent by the week and then by the month?
Well, there is no monthly rentals, we do weekly rates, I mean, weekly rentals. But as of right now, there's probably maybe two that are weekly, two to three, I wanna say.
And what are the others, daily?
Yes, some of them are dailies, yes, ma'am.
Those are the ones that concern me, the daily.
You have been renovating, how long have you been renovating?
It's been about two weeks.
And have we had a lot of calls in those two weeks?
Do you rent by the hour?
No, sir, we do not.
Very good. I was gonna get that one way or the other.
Um, yeah.
We were just wondering, who is, why were you guys out here this morning? You said you were out there for chess pays, I thought.
There, there were two, I believe there were two incidences this morning. One of them was a police matter. I, I got there with one of the first police cars and just kinda sat back and watched.
It was a fight call, it was a fight.
A fight?
A fight disturbed us.
Okay, because I thought there was somebody that used to stay there in one, in room nineteen, that you guys were looking for a warrant. I'm, I'm.
No, it was a fight.
Somebody?
I guess it was.
It was, it came in as a domestic.
It was a domestic?
Well, fight, yeah.
That, somebody from the hotel called or from the office?
I only, it was from the office, no, I don't know.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't look into it, it was, I just followed.
It probably was in the office, 'cause you would've known about it, it was from the office, it was probably on the cell phone.
That's what I was thinking, okay, alrighty, thank you.
Okay, do you, do you plan on being present?
At the facility?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I'll be present there all the time now.
Okay, now, I know that we have the motel on the north side. What are you doing in the, the retail spots on the side?
Retail spots, we're still debating if we wanna make those, you know, rentals or, you know, just shop, shops. But as of right now, we have no plans.
Okay, you heard what Ms. Barnes had to say, and, and I'm inclined to, to agree with it. But does this scare you?
Uh, just a little bit, not a whole lot, I mean, it, it's, it's a mess that, you know, it was done by another person. But, you know, we, I am trying to get the property up to date and, you know, make it livable and hopefully make it better for the community itself.
Do you have the funding to do all these things?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
You're looking at a lot of money.
Yes, I understand that.
Lot. The right way.
How often do you go into the rooms? Are they clean daily or how do you know what, there is some kind of activity in a room? Do you go in there frequently?
Yes, ma'am, we do, as of right now, we are going to each room and, you know, seeing if anything is damaged and how the residents are, you know, basically treating the rooms.
I mean, are they cleaned daily? The sheets cleaned every, changed every day or?
Yes, ma'am, we are changing everything daily, basically, giving them room services.
Have you just started doing that?
No, no, we were doing it in the past, but I wasn't there at the place when, before all this incident happened.
Okay, 'cause I'm going back to my code enforcement days and. Yeah. Okay. You know, for me, if, if you're gonna take over, we expect you to be present, we expect you to take over. I expect to see some big changes, and I drive by three or four times a day. But those are gonna be my expectations. You know, if, if we're going to stay this, and I wanna keep it open, that, you know, if they don't do what needs to be done.
I like the suggestion that the fines continue until it's done, then we go back and talk about that.
I'm definitely in fa, I agree, and I'm also in favor of the deed and lieu of foreclosure. And I'm looking at a timeframe of six months. I, I, hey, guess what? You know what? With monthly inspections, and then they can come back and ask for an extension if we deem. But the clock's ticking here, and, 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 you know.
You know, the, you know, the thing that, that, you know, where, I don't want to set him up for failure. And I understand what you're saying, but I think we do need to have inspections.
Yes, that, that is fine with me.
But, but based on me trying to get things done on some of my properties, I mean, how much can be done in a month? Yeah. But I agree, we need inspections.
I don't, I don't see a year.
I think we won't know until we get the, you know, the, the person in, to actually, the contractor, the inspector. We won't know what, what they're looking at, because I think we're just looking at, we're just looking at the paint and the things like that, but there may be other things that would be.
And why don't we, why don't we give them a timeframe to have the inspection done? Hire them an inspection done, and then we come back here again.
Okay, I like that.
I'll hold the commission. Let me, let me just kinda tell you where I'm at with the whole thing. I appreciate y'all being here.
Yes.
And two weeks ago, I was all in favor of trying to help every bit that I can. When I took the oath of office in two thousand and nine, one of my biggest parts is to protect the welfare of this community. When I see the numbers that our police departments put up and our fire departments put up, I can no longer support keeping that hotel going. I, I just, I can't do it, we don't have the manpower. And I know I want, I, I would love to give y'all a chance. We had a code enforcement board that's been very active, I know they do the right things. I don't want your property, I really don't. But we are here to take care of the health and welfare of this community. And I think if we allow it to continue, and I, with all my heart, I think it's going to continue. I just don't see it being able to be stopped at this point. But I'm gonna shut up now, and I'm gonna let the commission, I'm gonna pull the commission, and whatever the will of this commission is, is what we'll go along with, okay? Karen, do you mind if I start with you?
No, not at all. I think until they hire the inspector and see what it is, because it, I can't only imagine, and I know you say you're financially, but until you see the numbers, I think, I think we oughta look at that first. I think we oughta get to that step and then let them reevaluate what they wanna do. I'm gonna, well, I can only go back on my, my little addition that I don't, that's my one little scope, and it took a year and a day to add nine hundred square feet to my house. And I don't think it's gotten much better. Someone was talking, oh, they were talking about can't get block. They couldn't get rebar to pour into concrete, they can't get windows, they can't get doors. So this is gonna be a challenge. And I think once they start digging into it, it's only, my house is old and we had the bathroom from Hades, because every layer you brought up was something else. So I would, because they've been in, they've been here, they've asked. I don't think we stop anything, we keep it going, but let them get the inspection. And then let's go from there. Because I would hate for them to pour good money into something that's not going to be viable.
So you're in favor of them hiring an inspector, a private inspector to come in and, and give them numbers?
Right.
But you don't want anything stopped on our enforcement at this time?
Correct.
Okay.
We can always come back and stop that, but.
Perfect, Nan.
Well, I'm in agreement with Karen, but I would also like to see a timeframe put on hiring the inspector. You know, within a reasonable timeframe. I also too, you know, I, I agree with you, mayor, I mean, we have to look at the health and welfare of our community. The manpower alone, from just law enforcement and, and the public safety issue alone, really bothers me. Really, really bothers me. But I also am a human being and I look at the aspect, I know we'd be displacing two families, 'cause you all live there. You're, you and your family, and your mom and dad live there, correct? So I look at the displacement of two families as well. So I, I'm in agreement with Karen, I, I, but I, I wanna, I wanna short timeframe to get that inspector. I don't wanna drag it out.
Well, so far, I'm in agreement with every, everything that everyone said. When it came before us a couple of weeks ago, I was ready to shut it down.
We all were.
Yeah. But, but Mrs. Patel got up and she spoke and, and, and we agreed to have her, her brother come in. I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, I had the opportunity to observe, you know, their dad when he came in. And listening to them talk today, I just feel like we need to give them the opportunity, because the, the, the dialogue is totally different. I believe they're sincere, I hope they're sincere. But what I will say, if they don't adhere to what we want, I'll help knock the place down.
Gotcha.
Got it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm thinking about, I, I wrote, jotted down some things, the cost, the clientele. It has a reputation, how do you change that? Can you change that? We had calls as recent as today. I think we have to monitor how many more calls to the police, the fire department. If that continues, then what? And I just wonder, when do we stop the bleeding?
You know, we, one of the things that I, I think Nan touched on, and we probably talked about it throughout this. You know, we have a segment of the population that can't afford to live anywhere else.
Than full credit.
Exactly, so, and there's only one other motel in, in, well, in town.
To the Royal?
To who?
Total Free.
Total Free, the Royal and?
Where's the budget?
Royal and Budgeted.
Oh, I forgot about that one. But, you know, we, we need to keep that in mind, you know, I, I, I understand, we want to, we want to clean it up. But let's give them the opportunity to do what they need to do. Because if it goes away, we, we talk about homeless now, you know, we may have, we may have an issue.
I just wanna say one thing, Mr. Patel, you can thank your sister.
Yeah.
For coming two weeks ago, because if not, we were, we were ready to pull pause.
Commissioners, thank you, mayor. It's clear there's a consensus to give the Patel's an opportunity to have an inspector come in and, and make the report. I just want to make sure that the commission is clear on the direction. If, you know, if you're. If, you know, if you're moving with staff recommendation, this will be a state licensed, independent, third-party provider.
Yeah.
State licensed, someone like MTCI, Universal Engineering, Sky Tech. And that's very important, so we can make sure that the inspection's comprehensive. Everyone's in agreement there that that is the requirement?
I, I'd like a deadline.
And tha- and then the second would be what, what deadline, so staff knows when to follow up with the Patels?
What's reasonable, Lori? You deal with that more than we do.
I was gonna say, what have they, what's the, what have they been looking at?
I would say, I've been trying to get a proposal for on-call planning services for, over a month. So I would say thirty to forty-five days for them to engage, and then sixty to seventy days to have the inspection completed and the report submitted. I would not venture to go as far as three months. However, if the commission were willing to consider a one-time inspe- extension, for example, the Patels provide the, the proposal, provide the contract, show they've engaged the inspector, and the inspector has scheduled, and that's not within that seventy-day window. We could have some discretion to authorize that additional time for the inspection company to complete the inspection and provide the report. Does that sound reasonable?
Mayor, if I may add one thing, I don't think we want to select the inspector, but we may want to...
Provide the information.
We, could we potentially accept the, in other words, while we wouldn't select the inspector, it needs to be an inspector that's acceptable to the city. I don't know if that's a reasonable request, but I think it should be an inspector that is acceptable to the city.
And that would be state licensed, right?
Right, and that's why I gave the examples. What we can do is we can provide the Patels the, the Florida statute reference number, and you can, when you reach out to these providers, make sure that they are properly licensed according to the Florida statutes, and know that if they aren't, the city will not accept that inspector.
Excuse me, the three that you suggested, are all three of them state licensed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I can go back on the minutes and find those three that you suggested, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I saw them up there, okay. All right, I will take it upon myself to make sure tomorrow's Friday that I will call one, somebody, all three of those agencies, to make sure, somebody calls me back. And I will make sure somebody calls me back. If you don't want to do the three months, six months, I can tell you, I'm gonna start on it tomorrow morning.
And one of the things I, I'd like to do, I know that, that both chiefs, you know, it's not easy for them to get in, you know. I'd like for them to be able to, you know, if you have a room that's vacant, let them in, let them look around. The, the, the fire, uh, detect, smoke detectors, they need to see that before you rent it out to someone else.
That's what I was a little concerned about this morning. Somebody came over yesterday and did an inspection, but all of the smoke detectors were in working condition. I don't know what, they went into six rooms, you said?
Oh, they, they did. We had an extension cord and a sign issued yesterday, which were minor discrepancies.
Right.
Yeah, I said that. They're, they're, they were minor discrepancies.
Right, but...
And they'll probably be taken care of right away.
Yeah, they were. I, I, that's what I think my brother-in-law told me. But all the smoke detectors were in working condition, because I know I told him that's the one thing that he's gotta do in the rooms.
Well, she, she noted that she couldn't make access to all of them, and that's normal. That's not a bad thing. We can't get in all of it. We know that. So when somebody's in a room, we're not gonna go in the room. That's not gonna happen.
Right.
I have a shoot, I have a shoot.
That's not on you. That's just the way it is.
Oh, okay.
Craig Capri Police Chief, I would recommend after they get that inspection, they could probably get it done. Make them do the work and get it done faster, but also come with a benchmark list of the get, if it's gonna be salvageable, to get those things done. On top of that, I recommend they put signs up immediately under police surveillance. Number one, sign up for the trespass arrest site program. That's number two. Number three, mandate them to get a camera system now. They can get one for a couple hundred bucks. Get cameras up there. We have access to the camera system anytime we want it. I'd put that in there right now, because once the, once the bad guys and the, and these, these, these criminal elements sees the, the cameras and the signs, it's gonna help. We're gonna continue to hammer them from a police, if there's criminal activity, but I can tell you that we'll give you a monthly report in the meantime, what we got going on. But I would make sure she's definitely involved. I don't have too much faith in him, to be honest with you. I, 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 I think she needs to be a big part of this. Nothing against you, but it seems to me she knows what's going on.
It's just that I've been in this business for twenty-two years, and I've been at, since I, since my parents bought the place in nineteen eighty-four, that's all I've done is motel business.
Not against you personally, but it seems to me she knows what's going on.
He just started. He just started, so, yeah, but definitely.
I understand, but you seem to get stuff done. I'm a little leery of him. He just didn't want to say nothing to begin with, and it's like, here we go again.
He's so nervous.
I got you. Don't be nervous. We're, we're here to help you, not hurt you.
Don't be nervous.
And Ms. Patel, any major escalations, I will bring this back in front of the commission, and we will stop it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So you're gonna have to really monitor what comes in there.
Okay, so my question for you is, let's say somebody, right now, we only have a handful of our, like, maybe weekly customers. Let's say you just completely stop renting for now.
That's where I was.
And just maybe one or two, maybe if they're driving past or driving through. One of the things that we were monitoring, that I would, I was coaching him on, because he's, he's not, he's never done this. Like I said, I've been doing this all my life. You see people, you see, I was watching a, a documentary on faces of crack, or meth. It's an Orange County one, where you see people with little bruises on their face. They're coming in jittery, their eyes are glazed over. So when I was, when he was trying to explain to you that we're kind of filtering out who comes through and who doesn't, he just didn't know how to say it, but that's what he's looking for. The crackheads.
I've been in the Dollar General right next door and watched people come from the hotel into that Dollar General, jittery, scabs all over themselves, and we know what's going on.
Exactly. And that's what I told him. I said, you have a handful of people that are there that are retired. Just work with them, and that should be fine. You don't need, you don't, and you don't need to have a huge influx of money just yet. You gotta get that reputation going. And we were, I was, I also told him, I said, maybe we need to get a sign up that says new management, but I don't want to do that just yet, just because I don't know if all the renovations are there for me to, uh, to bring in a, a new clientele, and then they say, well, what about, it's new management, but the renovations just don't look great. And we've done what we can cosmetically, but I just don't know if, I know you guys were telling us something about the plumbing and everything like that, and that's why last time I asked if we could get a pre-inspection of some sort, but I like the idea where we have a third party come in, so that way you, you know, it's not my guy versus your guy. It's just a whole different person.
And, and you might find after this inspection, it's just not worth it.
And that's what I was gonna ask. You said there's a lot of money, or, or the cost?
I just know renovations. I'm doing a hundred-and-eleven-year-old house right now. It's a lot of money, and you've got twenty-eight rooms.
No, we only have fourteen.
Where did we get twenty-eight rooms from?
That was my motel that had twenty-eight.
Okay. So fourteen rooms.
There's varying room numbering across the inter- across the internet. Perhaps at one time, there were more rooms, but thank you for clarifying fourteen.
Yeah.
When you start peeling away that onion, you're...
I definitely understand that.
Mr. Patel, I, I think it's, it's important that you get to know that man right there. You say you've never done this before. He needs to become one of your best friends. Maybe not go to dinner with him, but he needs to become...
We'll help him any way we can.
Yeah, yeah. Don't be afraid to call him. You're gonna need the help. I'm gonna tell you that right now. You're going to need the help.
That's why I did go into the police department that one morning that I was there to, about two and a half, three weeks ago. I said, you know, I'm trying to clean up the place. If I call you, it's gonna be for help. Please don't put, you know, make this something that's gonna be against us, but we are trying to clean up. Because personally, he himself doesn't like the clientele that's there. That's why he was never a part of the motel business, because like he said, he would always try to tell my dad, this is, you're not doing this right. He's just very hard-headed. And the police chief, he's not wrong. It is greed. I'm gonna be honest with you, and I, I just don't like that. I, that's not how business should be.
So we've got forty-five days to get a, a inspection done and return back to the city of Eustis.
Yes, sir.
And for your, and for you all to be able to look at it as well, decide if you need to move, if you can move forward financially.
Yes, sir.
Okay? We would like to request cameras be put up.
Now, the cameras that we already have up, how do we get those connected?
How about I come out there and meet with you and give you some pointers?
Would that work?
I'll come out there, how about Monday?
That's fine.
I'll come in Monday morning, and we'll sit down, and we'll talk, and I'll come, give you some advice on what might work for you, and we'll look at the signs, trespass arrest site, and we'll look at the camera systems. And you can get them pretty cheap right now. We get, make sure, we're, we're not here to hurt you, close you down. We just want to get you into compliance.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not about taking people's businesses away, but we gotta draw a line when we have criminal activity. But we'll give you a shot all day long to make it right.
Now, do you need me to be there Monday morning?
I, I can take care of it.
Wonderful, thank you.
To clarify, I've heard a few different numbers. We're looking at forty-five days for inspection and report delivered to code enforcement?
Yes.
I thought we said ninety.
Will we be able to get an appointment that soon? Because I know you said you were having a hard time with something for a month. Will we be able to get an appointment that soon?
And that's the question. All of, all of the engineering firms are very busy these days. So would the commission consider thirty days for a proposal, a signed contract submitted, with a licensed provider acceptable to the city? And then an appointment scheduled within the next thirty days? That would give you sixty days.
Okay, so get an appointment scheduled within the next thirty days?
A, a proposal, a signed contract within thirty days, if that's acceptable to the commission, with the licensed provider, and if you have any questions about whether, uh, whomever you're speaking with is properly licensed, contact me, Lori Barnes, or Eric Martin in the code enforcement, and we can confirm that that particular provider would be acceptable. And if it's acceptable to the commission, thirty days for the signed contract delivered to the city, an appointment within thirty days, and if there's any reason why they cannot complete contract inspection report within that sixty days, they come back to the commission with their progress and request additional time? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, to me.
Everybody okay?
So that's thirty, thirty days for a contract, sixty days for an appointment.
No, sixty days.
Oh, well, okay, I'm, I'm counting.
Sixty days for inspection and delivery of final report to the city. And again, we'll get that, we'll get that information to you, so you know when you're talking to this provider that you are asking for a review for compliance for International Property Maintenance Code, Florida Building Code, and Florida Fire Prevention Code. So they are fully aware of the scope. And, and the expectation that they will also provide estimated costs of improvement, so that you can then make a decision if it's, if it's a, a good financial decision for you and your family to move forward with entering into an agreement with the city. And if the answer is then yes, city staff will work with the city attorney and you, or your representative, to put that agreement together.
Okay, and one last question. I know we were talking about, um, last time we talked about putting a pause on the penalties. I think earlier, did we talk about lifting those penalties until everything is done, or we're still having, we still have a pause on the penalties?
Well, once everything's completed, we'll talk about that.
Okay, because I didn't know if...
They're gonna continue at this time.
The penalties are gonna continue at this time? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
ACS, that's an architectural consulting firm? They're not a part of any of the, the three that you suggested, right?
They may be. ACS Architecture. I'll look them up tomorrow and make sure if they have the proper license, and I'll let you know.
Okay, and I also spoke with Engineering Services Group. I spoke with Adam over there too. Those are the, the two engineering firms that actually called me back about the windows. But I didn't know if they would also be the ones that I could contact for the third-party inspections.
I'll look into it, and I'll contact you to let you know.
Okay, we'll exchange cards at the end? Or, I don't have a card, but I can get your card.
Lori, would you write down everything that we've talked to Mrs. Patel about tonight and get it to her in writing so that she has it? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, discussion regarding compensation for acting city manager. Bill Howe, you gonna come up and do that?
Surprise! Surprise!
Sorry to wake you up.
Well, I need a lot of caramel cream, so...
Bill Howe, Director of Human Resources.
What's that? Sorry.
Bill Howe, Director of Human Resources. Um, previously, late September, we went through Ron Nyberg's performance review. I provided salaries for area city managers, if that's information you wanted. Clermont, two-hundred and one thousand dollars. Currently, that was being filled by an acting city manager at one-sixty. Leesburg, one-ninety-one. They anticipated a three percent increase this fiscal year. Mount Dora was at one-sixty-seven. That was filled by an acting city manager at one-fifty-six, Taveries at two-oh-two. So that was the information I previously provided.
What's, what y'all like to do?
So where is he now?
I said, where's the current rate of pay?
Your, your previous meeting, he went from one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, Tom. You approved an increase to one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand to serve his interim.
I made a hundred-and-sixty.
What was the interim at the other cities?
One-sixty was Clermont.
Clermont was...
And one-sixty-seven?
Clermont was one-sixty. Mount Dora's interim was one-fifty-six.
See, the one thing, 'cause he's, he's still doing both jobs.
And we are bigger than Mount Dora, too.
What, what I would recommend you consider is if there's a, an increase now, and eventually at George Fest, or whatever time you decide to, to make that full, I assume it would be appropriate to make a bump at that time when he's done permanent. So those are things that I think you should take into consideration, whatever those numbers are.
What was the top?
Yeah, what was Ron making when, when he left?
Ron was making one-fifty-five. He, he had previously accepted a week of vacation in lieu of a two percent raise. If he added two percent on it, he was at one-fifty-eight, three-oh-six.
I'm still at one-sixty.
Mayan? And Karen?
Well, where are we? I'm sorry. Hello?
The three of them are at one-sixty right now.
He's doing two jobs.
One-sixty. Tom, you okay with that, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Are you sure?
You sure?
Yes, thank you.
Well, if, if, if he, you know, if things go well, we'll take another look at it at the end of February and see where we are. Truthfully, we're just a little smaller than Leesburg, and we're bigger than Mount Dora, Taveries. So we, we're gonna have to take a look at it, so...
One-sixty.
Let's do one-sixty at this time, okay?
No problem, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, good evening. So I've, I've looked, I've looked through all this. I've conferred with Lori Barnes. Mary Montez actually compiled a lot of public records in response to a public records request that was made regarding the history of the JPA and what may or may not have been done under the original agreement from nineteen eighty-seven. I'm gonna try to summarize this as best I can. At any point, please interrupt me if you have any questions. Happy to answer them. So in nineteen eighty-seven, the city and Lake County entered into this resolution that provided for some planning and other obligations between the two entities. Two of these conditions is sub-paragraph three of the resolution required that there be a committee established. And then that committee would monitor and review development of the plan, and eventually recommend a joint plan to both the city and the county on how this area was supposed to grow. Never happened. That was nineteen eighty-seven. Still hasn't happened. It's been thirty-three years. Another condition there, paragraph four, was that the city adopt a comprehensive plan amendment to specify how the JPA was going to work in the future. The county also had that obligation in nineteen eighty-seven. There aren't any timeframes... timeframes in this agreement. It doesn't say you shall do this in a year, ten years, fifty years, a hundred years. But when there's an absence of a specific duration, the courts will usually impose a reasonableness standard. There hasn't been a formal amendment to this agreement, and it's been thirty-three years, and those conditions haven't been met. So we look at what, then what was being met. And so what was being met was the condition that we notify the county.
You can get that off.
You need that?
It's my watch.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So, we have an obligation to notify the county of annexations that occur. We've been doing that. And so that's essentially the only condition of the agreement that the parties have really complied with. And so what happened with MAP nineteen, this was never formally adopted by Lake County, MAP nineteen. It was a map prepared by Lake County and never adopted. It somehow became part of our comprehensive plan. We don't actually know exactly how it became that way. It is still labeled draft. There are multiple references to it being a proposed plan. The top of it says proposed future land use, proposed joint planning area. There's a note here that says Lake Local Planning Agency working non-transmitted draft map. And then in the right-hand corner, it clearly says draft. And so every form of this has been in draft form and has been labeled proposed. At least two county commissioners have taken the position that, and one of them publicly here at our meeting, that if you remove MAP nineteen, then you basically don't have a JPA, and that would allow other cities to potentially encroach on what we think the JPA is. Since Commissioner Parks made that statement, I contacted Melanie the day after she said he misspoke. Legally, there are all kinds of issues with this, 'cause you have both sides not really honoring the initial agreement. You have a draft document attached to our comp plan that's been there for over ten years that have given some people in the county and then opposition to growth, basically, a blueprint for prohibiting certain development in this area. Because if you remember from the map, they're color-coded, and it also identifies what the densities are for that. If you notice, the density for the Keating property is labeled conservation in this map. That's been that way for eleven years. So this map allows opposition to growth to basically say, you can't grow under the other provisions of your comp plan. You are restricted. This is part of your comp plan. Here are the densities that are required under it, and you can't exceed that. So that's one of the reasons you have opposition to MAP nineteen. Another one is the county's potential position of, if you get rid of this map, then we're claiming you don't have an agreement. I wanted to get a more formal opinion from Melanie Marsh as to legally what she thought of that. I haven't been able to do that yet. What would happen if you removed MAP nineteen? The county could make their arguments. If you leave it in place, the future growth of these areas are gonna be subject to litigation, 'cause there is an argument that you have already imposed density requirements contrary to our, our existing comprehensive plan as part of this map. So.
So you could have used that map with Mr. Keating's lawsuit?
That's a whole other story. What, what if you.
Conservation?
If you remember, if you remember, Mr. Keating sued under Burt Harris that, that he had vested entitlements. And because of that, the designation by the city and the prohibition, basically, on future development there was inappropriate. That was his claim. Now, he had a twenty-six million dollar lawsuit. We ended up settling it for four hundred thousand. So the merits of that claim were really suspect, if, if you remember. But it's, it's labeled conservation. It is under this particular draft map that's attached to our comprehensive plan. So do you have discretion to remove the map? Absolutely. What position the county would take if you did? I'm not sure. The county itself has never formally approved this.
Can you pull the commission? And can you ask Melanie what they will do if we remove the map? The reason why I'm asking that is because I have a sneaking suspicion. We remove that map, Mount Dora will annex immediately. That's where I am.
Has our land use attorney looked at it?
I'm sorry?
Has our land use attorney looked at it and given us any recommendations?
No.
We, if I may, we had a discussion, Derek and I had a discussion with Derek Bruce about being involved with the atrium agreement. We did not retain him for a discussion on MAP nineteen. If that's something that you wanted us to do, we could do that. But we've not retained them related to MAP nineteen specifically. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Derek, if we remove it, what's the likelihood that it would, we would prevail if we took the county to court?
I think you still have an existing agreement with the resolution eighty-seven thirty-one because, or thirty-four, because there are certain provisions that the parties have complied with and honored. And the agreement itself back from nineteen eighty-seven establishes the boundaries. There is an attachment to it. It does show a map. And that map's boundaries are pretty clear. The, not to add another wrinkle to this, there are already so many, but the, the map that's attached to the nineteen eighty-seven agreement was not honored. Taverries has encroached on that boundary, and so has Mount Dora. So if you looked at the inclusion of the email from Ms. Barnes and the county, the county about two years ago said, these lines are off, what's wrong? Well, what happened was Mount Dora had encroached, and so did Taverries, and they were permitted to do so, and I guess the city eventually acquiesced to that. So the existing map, the existing map attached to the nineteen eighty-seven agreement is not reflect the accurate boundary. But because of the other approvals that have been made by the county of Mount Dora's JPA and Taverries' JPA, we know what that boundary is. So the, the encroachments that were made, what we're left with, we know exactly what that is. So I think at the end of the day, you still have a JPA. You still have a boundary that's defined, although tweaked. But I still don't have confirmation from Melanie in writing what position the county would take if MAP nineteen were deleted.
Yeah, yeah. So if we removed it, and Mount Dora decided to, to move on it, then we'd have to go against Mount Dora and the county, correct?
Yes, if they're, if they're unified in their approach to the litigation.
And what will happen if we keep MAP nineteen?
If you keep MAP nineteen, and there's development in that area, and it's inconsistent with the designations on the map, then there can be an argument that you approve something inconsistent with your comp plan and give them a right to sue to oppose any development.
Have we had any of that so far?
Have we had approvals in this area that are inconsistent with the map?
And, and it's gone to Tallahassee, and they said no, and you've been sued?
Been sued over it, no.
Okay. And Tallahassee said, no, you can't do that. They've approved everything.
No, everything's been approved, that we've submitted.
Okay. I, I, I would respectfully suggest that you get a hold of Melanie and pull that commission.
I don't think they would tell us.
No, I don't think they would tell us.
If they say no, they say no, but at least get an opinion from Melanie.
I want to pull it. I want to pull the map. That's my, that's my feeling. I don't think it's, it's been a draft. It's never been approved. Why do we have it in our comp plan? Why do we have it in our comp plan?
Is there any type of precedence with anything like this that you've heard of?
No, this is a very unique situation, particularly in light of the thirty-three year obligation to do certain things and just haven't been done. Now, we did find minutes and requests from the early nineteen nineties where the city had asked the county to move forward as agreed to in nineteen eighty-seven, and there wasn't much of a reception to that.
So the county decided not to, as far as we know?
I think that's a fair statement, yeah. You would agree with that, right, Ms. Barnes?
So with thirty-three years going by, that doesn't make it like automatic, huh, that that counts?
Well, it's problematic, because you could take a legal position that the parties have abandoned the essential terms of the agreement. But we've, we've still honored other parts of it. And historically, that agreement has been referenced as the agreement, although these designations have maybe changed that according to the county's perspective.
And the city of Eustis adopted this when?
Two thousand and ten.
Adopted the MAP nineteen?
Yeah, that was way before then.
Oh, yeah. Well, the original resolution was nineteen eighty-seven with the boundary.
With the map, with a different map.
I'm talking about MAP nineteen.
MAP nineteen was, the preparation date is labeled two thousand and ten. Do you remember the exact approval of the comp plan? I think it was two thousand and eleven?
No, the adoption date was in two thousand and ten. Yes. The preparation lasted from two thousand and eight through two thousand and nine, and it was adopted in two thousand and ten.
What was the commission's intent of bringing this map in?
The, the consultants reviewing the comprehensive plan on behalf of the city noticed that the city's future land use map, and this may go to condition number four in the JPA, I can't remember it verbatim. The city's future land use map that was in the comp plan prior to two thousand and ten showed land use designations for properties in incorporated Eustis and visionary designations for unincorporated Eustis. The consultant at that time in a memo suggested to the city that including a land use map that provided designations on unincorporated properties created confusion as to the jurisdictional control over those areas, and that we should have a land use map only showing land use designations for incorporated properties. So while there's no discussion in minutes, there's no written reasoning behind including MAP nineteen on the basis of that recommendation and the change in Eustis's land use map to be only incorporated, and then the addition of MAP nineteen that showed the JPA boundary, albeit with unincorporated future land use designations. I think all of that worked together to include MAP nineteen in the comp plan for the sole purpose of showing we have a joint planning area. And today, we have the unanticipated consequences of including that map in our comp plan that shows designations that are inconsistent with the rest of our comprehensive plan.
But the bottom line is, the commission voted that in, correct?
The commission approved the comprehensive plan amendments as a whole. It was a substantial amendment, taking the city from zoning to form-based code.
And I knew that, but that map was in there, correct?
A map was in there. There is no specific discussion mention of MAP nineteen in any of the meeting minutes of the commission at the time the comp plan amendment to include MAP nineteen was adopted. So it wasn't specifically discussed that we can find by the commission in two thousand and ten.
So, so you're saying it wasn't adopted?
No, it hasn't been approved.
It wasn't adopted by Lake County. The map in our, in our comp plan is a draft map prepared by Lake County that was never adopted by Lake County. Yet the city of Eustis incorporated a draft map into their comprehensive plan.
So it was approved? City of Eustis approved it?
Yeah. So you had ACOM, you had Gladding Jackson. Those were the two consultants that basically compiled a massive amendment, basically an entire overhaul of the comprehensive plan. And this map was part of it. But again, it's labeled draft, and it has three provisions where it says proposed, 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 non-transmitted draft. And given all that ambiguity, you're gonna need a judge to answer that one.
Exactly.
Can we do that?
You can do that. We can, we can sue. It's a declaratory judgment action against the county. If the county takes a position, should a majority of this commission ask me to get a formal opinion from Melanie on what their legal position is? And if it's different than what we believe, then we can file a suit for declaratory judgment and have the judge tell us. All right, let's sort out this mess. Here it is.
I think we have to sort this mess out. If not, it's gonna continue to come back and bite us, one way or the other.
Between a rock and a hard place, that's.
Could we, could we see what Melanie says on her legal opinion on that with the county?
If you can. The majority of the commission wants, absolutely.
I'm okay with asking. She ain't gonna tell us.
She not gonna tell us.
What was I gonna say? How, how are we gonna believe in it?
It's called plausible deniability.
Be nice. I mean, you have Sean Park standing right in front of us, saying things that was not true. And you think we're gonna get a real answer?
I'm just asking Derek for the attorney, that's all. If she says, if she says no, she says no, but it's worth a shot. Can't say we didn't.
Everyone on board with that? No? Karen?
I don't think we're gonna get, no.
I say all you could do is say yay and hey. And what are you gonna prove?
Yeah, exactly.
Get it in writing.
They're not gonna put it in writing.
Would you mind if I asked nicely? They've been, they've been pretty friendly, you know, the last few times they were here.
They have done.
Yeah.
You know, I.
You okay with them asking?
It's a little hurt to ask.
Ask. Yeah, we, we just.
We have to do it, you guys.
No, we, you keep saying we have to, you keep saying we have to do this.
Well, what's your alternative?
Well, one thing is for us to get a set and, and do what we need to do.
So you're talking about going to litigation?
Yes, we have to get this figured out. We have been playing with this too long. They've been kicking us around too long. And frankly, I'm fed up with it.
It's three to two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just fed up with it. At, at some point, we have to say enough. And as long as we sit here and we think, oh, well, well, let's pray with them, let's do this, they're gonna.
Ain't nobody here over here saying that.
They're gonna, they're gonna kick our behind.
No. The only thing I'd like to ask, if we, if it's just the one shot, would be to see if they say, and then if they don't, if they don't give us anything, then we move on, then we move forward. Exactly, we move forward. I'm not, I'm not opposed to moving forward, but I think we give it one last shot.
I think, I think we say that today, and then they give us something else, and we push it down the road again. I'm fed up with it. I'm just fed up with it. You know, you know, we, we, we sit here and, and we talk to people about, you know, their property rights, and we do this, and, you know, it's so much stuff. And then we just, we just let the county just keep coming back and just stepping us. And I'm frankly fed up with it. And I think at some point, we have to get a set and do something about it.
Three to two, ask Melanie.
Three to two, I'll, I'll reach her out in the morning and I'll.
If you can get it before the next meeting, and then if we have to, we need to go ahead and get a judge to.
Is it possible for him to? Why, why don't we just pull it and then see what they do? Instead of asking, why don't we just do it and see what they do?
You know why we won't pull it. You know exactly why we won't pull it.
Why, Willie?
Because we're afraid.
I'm not afraid.
I'm not afraid of anything.
Well, then let's pull it.
I'm not.
We'll have to take money out of reserves to fight that.
Well, let's, let's do something instead of sitting here and letting them kick us every time we try and do something.
We'll cut Tom's, we'll cut Tom's salary.
Sorry, Tom.
Understood. Three, two, I'll reach out to her in the morning.
Thank you.
I, I can reach out and get, try to get an answer. And if it comes back, however it comes back, let us know immediately.
Of course.
And then we can decide what we want to do.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get your agenda items. Willie.
You better come to me last. I'm still steaming.
Steaming.
I'm steaming. I'm steaming. Come to me last.
Karen, future agenda item.
I don't have, oh wait, do I? No, I don't.
Yeah.
I can't think of anything right now. I'm still.
Man?
I don't know if it's future agenda item, Derek, but I know we had talked a couple meetings ago about the Sharps Park situation. What did we decide or where are we with that?
I thought we were going to reach out to Don Oliver and see if it was on MLS and what exactly the status was of the property being for sale.
Right, I did call him a couple of times. He didn't answer. I'll reach out again. I'll reach out tomorrow.
Anything else, man? Willie, future agenda.
Yes, the grant writer, you know, I, I'd love us to, to, to move forward with that. Yeah, I think there's a, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money out there that the city can use. And it'd be great if we could, we could have access to it.
Tom, can you start working on that?
Yeah, so I will tell you that we were doing some research on comparable positions, job descriptions, salary ranges. And honestly, there's, there's not a lot out there. There are, I, I think we've probably discussed like management of CDBG grants. There are communities out there that are entitlement communities. They get money every year based on a formula. And so they have a whole grant infrastructure, but that's more about managing and reporting on CDBG grants. And that's not what we're looking for. And so there, there, there isn't a heck of a lot out there that we can take a look at to see what are, again, what are the salary ranges? What does a job description look like? And so I know Commissioner Hawkins provided some information about an individual who does this type of thing on a contract basis. I know there are a number of companies out there that help government agencies secure grants. And so we will, will keep looking at it and, and we need to figure out, is this something that we can contract with someone to do for us? Is this something that we can bring in-house? Or is this something we need to look at firms that specialize in this stuff? So we're, we're going to keep working on it.
Okay.
I kind of like the idea of a firm because then you've got for all areas.
Yeah. The, the issue that we run into a little bit is that different firms specialize in different types of grants. And so, for example, we used a group, a, a grant firm called, with Fred Fox. He helped us secure the CDBG grant for Palmetto Plaza and then managed that grant for us to some extent. But he doesn't specialize in a broad spectrum of grants. He specializes in certain specific types of grants. And so, again, we'll take a look. We'll keep working on it.
Maybe we need to be more specific in the areas that we're looking for a grant. Willie?
Yeah. Yeah, because I think that, you know, we've got what the police and fire, you know, and we may want a company to, to do general, but at least get a contract to do specific. Does that make sense?
Anything else?
Yes. Tom and I met with Atrium this week and I have to say it was a really good meeting. We, we sat down with them a couple of weeks ago and we talked about some of the things that we felt the commission was uncomfortable with with their contract. And, and I was surprised that, that they came back the way they did. So I, I think Tom's going to prepare something and talk to, to you all about it.
Okay. Good. Thank you for following through with that. Anything else for a future agenda?
No, because I get future agenda and comments mixed up. So, yeah, so I think we need to take one.
I think what, what we may do, we may do that.
Just whatever, while we have it, just do.
Because as we're talking, we'll pick up on those from now on. So, Karen or Emily, did I go through you?
I, I did remember something. I met with Tom and Carol Martin.
Yes.
And we're going to plan an event where we'll have all kinds of activities going on. There'll be more. We're still in the development spa, uh, phase and it should be in January. I think January twenty-second was what we're looking at, but we'll bring more information back about it.
And that was more for getting COVID shots and things like that?
That will be a part of it, but it's going to be more of a community event.
Yes, we're going to do like hamburgers and things like that. It'll be a community.
One of the things that I'm glad Emily said that because she reminded me, Lake Community Action had a, a food drive and the city provided tables and helped them out. But according to them, they, they fed, I've heard six hundred and I've heard five hundred. So they fed a lot of people.
That's a lot of people.
So, so I told them that I wouldn't mention it to the commission. But of course, I haven't gotten anything else I wanted to give back, but at least.
Did you check your emails?
Karen, anything to report?
She just did.
Um, anything to report?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Dan, anything to report?
I just, you know, I have talked to Mr. Garrick before and, and we have talked about this as a commission before. And just, you know, driving through Eustis, you know, we had the conversation, I still want to have this conversation about, you know, the traffic through and using the, using the bypass. I mean, I did notice, Rick, that I saw a sign. And I don't know if you put it up or somebody put it up. It said truck route. First time I've seen that ever. So I don't know who did it, but thank you. But I, I think one of the things though, that as we go through Eustis, we've been talking about the cleanup. You know, we worked well with Ms., with Ms. Barnes on the clothing bins, if you will. And that was like part of, first part of it. But it just seems like lately, Eustis has been a dumping ground. And I, I've been noticing that probably for the past month. And it's just like if we see where we, where we have it in our hands, we just drop it. You know, there's, there's, there's limbs everywhere, not, not necessarily on city property, but it's just everywhere. You know, how do we get this point across? How, how do we have this conversation? Look at us. I mean, you go up and down nineteen, we've got problems. And we've, the sign, we talked about those push-in signs. I mean, it's just, and the flags, there's more flag. It's just, where does it stop? There's grass that's tall everywhere. I just, I, I, we're going to have to get this, we're going to have to get ourselves cleaned up. That, that's all I know.
Yeah, I think we have to figure out who we want to be and.
Well, it isn't what it is now.
Yeah, we have to start acting like we want to, yeah, who we want to be.
And there are areas that the county needs to help us.
I totally agree with that because of all the outcomes.
Little up.
Willie, anything to report?
Uh.
He just did.
No. Yeah, that's right. You know I have a part two. I, I'd love for, for us to, to come out and support the, the group home initiative.
Yes. When, when is that again, Willie?
It's December first.
December first.
December first.
Eleven to one.
Eleven to one. It's at the community center.
Yes.
All right.
Of the, of the special needs.
Yeah.
Anything else, Willie?
Um, no, I think that's.
That's it?
Yeah.
Em, anything to report?
I'm good.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I do have a couple of items. One, we have had a boat, boat, I'm sorry, a tour boat operator approach us about doing tours out of Farren Park on Lake Eustis. They'd like to use the city's floating docks as kind of a home base. We've started the business tax receipt process. They do need written permission from the city. If there's no objection, we'll review their operation. If we're satisfied with their operation and they can complete the BTR process, I'd like to give them a letter of permission as the property owner to do boat tours. They're looking to do small tours initially under six people because that triggers some Coast Guard stuff. So it'll be smaller tours initially and then potentially grow from there. But again, if there are no objections, I'll work to get them permission to do that.
I think it's outstanding. Just check the liability.
That's right.
Yep, okay. We've gotten some cash offers for properties that were in the mode of own, that were going to be offered as part of mode of own. And I know we held off on mode of own and we're going to review mode of own as part of the CRA review process. But what I want to ask is do you want to put a hold on all of those properties until we can work through that CRA review process? Or do you want us to entertain cash offers? Now, I will tell you that the cash offer we received is below market and so I can negotiate for those properties. Or do we not want to entertain them at all until we figure out what we want to do on mode of own?
I'm, I, I'd love to put everything on hold because we don't know what we're going to do in East End yet. And let's try and figure that out. That's what I would like.
I definitely don't want to think that we should go below value ahead of time.
Absolutely.
No.
We need to get at least what's on the property purchase. Yes, at least.
Karen, what do you want to do?
I think it's fair unless it's, if it was in the mode, mode, then I think it needs to wait until the mode of own is.
Until we get the program back up and running.
Yes.
And I hope that's sooner than later, but I guess we're looking next year at this point.
So we're, our, our first CRA review committee meeting is scheduled for December ninth. We've talked about a series of meetings, so it probably would be the new year before we get that resolved.
Okay. So it sounds like, put it on hold until we have our meeting.
Okay. We can do that. Commissioner Haw, I'm sorry, are we good on that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hawkins mentioned atrium. What I'd like to do is kind of put together what we've worked on with them, how they've addressed certain concerns and meet individually with commissioners to determine if this is something that we want to bring back to commission as a whole. They also, I think they need some direction as to whether we are interested. If we're interested in going forward, they're going to invest more money in site planning and renderings. But I think we want to get some comfort level with the commissioners before we tell them to go ahead and do that. And so if it's okay, I'll be scheduling individual meetings with the commissioners to work through what we've been working on with atrium.
Everybody good with that? Okay.
I mentioned CRA review committee scheduled for December ninth at five PM. And Commissioner Hawkins mentioned the special needs engagement event December first, eleven to one. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a new.
Yes.
We do. We have a new events and tourism manager, Miranda Muir. I took pity on her and said, you don't need to come to commission tonight, but we look, would like to invite you to come to a commission meeting at some point in the future. And we'll introduce her as events allow that.
When is Erin's last day?
So we're still working on that. Erin is traveling and working remotely, but she will be in town next week for Light Up. And then beyond that, we're working to see if Miranda needs very specific help related to some things moving forward. So no official end date yet.
Light Up Eustis, Light Up Eustis and First Friday coming up.
We'll get that. Derek?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? All right. As Karen said.
He's bragging.
As Karen said, not this Friday, but next Friday is Light Up Eustis. And it should be beautiful out there.
Cold.
Should be a little cold, yeah. Five o'clock is the start time and nine o'clock is the finish. The program will be in the band shell, of course, like it was last year. We've got a lot of great vendors that were not able to be at our last First Friday. So we've got a lot of vendors coming back out. We've got some great music. So encourage everybody to come out. Willie, how about the football game? We still got that moving forward for the kids?
Yes, on January the ninth.
Okay.
At two.
Two o'clock. Got it. All right. Again, thank you all for everything that you do. And at, what was I going to say? I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. What? Pastor Renee? Is she okay? All right. Gail said that we need to keep Pastor Renee in our prayers. Keep my family in their prayers. I lost my last uncle last week. His funeral is this coming Tuesday. And then, of course, Gary Boarder's family. He served this, this whole accounting with dignity and pride. So thank you all for being here. That concludes our service.
Our service.
Service.
I'm gone. It's nine o'clock.
He's going to start passing the plate, y'all. Start passing the plate.